I'd like to call to order the City of Oconomowoc Council, Common Council Meeting for Tuesday, October 19th, 2021. Has appropriate meeting notification been made?
Yes, Your Honor, it has.
Would all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Ellis.
Here.
Alderman Zaffel.
Here.
Alderman Ellis. Alderman Spiegelberg.
Here.
Alderman Mulder.
Here.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Here.
Alderman Kavieski.
Here.
Welcome, everyone. I'd like to open the public hearing with regard to redistricting. Ms. Conan.
Thank you. I'll be going to the podium.
It's on.
Was it? Okay. Didn't look on. The screen's not on.
AV mute.
Pardon me? No. The light says it's on. I don't do this very often. Pardon me. Meeting, and so I'm just gonna kind of go over briefly what we discussed then and add a few comments. So tonight, council's gonna be considering the proposed changes to the aldermatic district boundaries due to the 2020 census, in addition to adoption of the redistricting ordinance, the resolution defining the wards, and the associated maps. So the purpose of redistricting, the redistricting process, is to redraw the city's ward and aldermatic boundaries to even out the population within the four districts. Statutory guidelines we followed included keeping ward sizes between 600 and 2,100 in population, equalling out district population to be approximately 25% for each district, keeping land contiguous, using census cell blocks, and meeting all publication and statutory requirements. The city was given 30 days by Waukesha County to complete this process due to the lateness of the official census data being released. So if council approves the redistricting tonight, we'll meet that deadline. The first slide here shows what the map looked like in 2010 on your left, and districts 1, 2, 3, and 4. The map on the right shows what the proposed redistricting is. Now, I'm going to the next map to enlarge it. Everything remains the same in the boundaries except for the southern half of District 1. District 1 has outgrown the other districts, and we've had to remove 1,034 voters, according to the census, out of District 1 and redistribute them to the other districts, and those were districts 2 and 3. So the map on your right, the blue, that was all District 1, this whole area. Now the map, excuse me, I said on your right, I meant your left. Now the map on your right shows a light green, and those are the cell blocks, if you will, that will be going to District 2, and the pink purplish color will be going to District 3. So it, it makes the least amount of change, it disrupts the least amount of voters, it all requirements, and it also contains whole cell blocks that we must do through the census. So, little bit brief on the very last slide here. So as you can see, we've, we've taken each district, and I've listed the population now with the new redrawn map. So they're all between 4,400 and 4,600 in population. District 2 is a little higher, and that is because District 2 is not gonna experience much growth at all in the next 10 years, and whereas districts 1, 3, and 4 have a lot of projects that are up and coming that are going to grow those districts by like 1,000 or more. So we're trying to keep it for the next 10 years as close to 25% as possible. So District 1 has 24.5%, District 2 25.7%, District 3 24.9%, and District 4 24.9%. The grand total of our population per the census is 18,203, and in 2010, we were 15,759. So we've increased by 2,444 people, according to the census. So I'll field any questions. Jason and I would be happy to answer any, but the proposed map that we are bringing back to you is the one we showed you on October 5th.
Thank you. I'd like to open this public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that has a question or would like to make a statement about the redistricting map? I do not have a blue card or any request to speak. Any questions from the public with regard to redistricting? At this time, we're gonna close the public hearing on redistricting and move on to item 5. I'd like to entertain a motion for approval of meeting minutes for October 5th, 2021. Go move, Kavieski.
Second, Zaffel.
All in favor?
Aye.
On to comments and suggestions from citizens. This is the part of the meeting where you, the folks in the audience, have the opportunity to share your opinion and your thoughts with the council members. It's not a two-way dialogue, it's you sharing your opinion with them. You do have a limit of three minutes. When you come up to the podium, please state your name and your address, and then move on into what you'd like to share with the council with regard to any subject, most of which tonight are definitely will be dispatch, but you can, you can talk about anything that you feel of interest. Please try to be professional and constructive, and try to help our council understand your point of view in the process. There will be, there's a little clock, so you'll see the clock when you come up to the podium, it'll be on the screen. If you're going beyond the three minutes, I'll try to politely ask you to wrap it up. One thing that's really important is there may be a lot of comments that are identical, so treat, please try to keep your comments to the point and not do a lot of repetition. I think that will help the council and really separate those items that are important to you. So we're gonna start off first with Cindy Caballero. And Cindy is from the City of Oconomowoc.
Good evening. Cindy Caballero, address is 215 East Pleasant. I live Fowler Lake Village. I had a quick comment about, I had a situation actually in September 28th, when I accidentally hit my telephone and the 9/11 alarm went off. We had people coming in and out of the building for an evening that I was having, and in, as a result, the button went off. The Oconomowoc, I believe, Fire Department responded, and the Waukesha Police Department responded. As we were traveling, or as I was traveling throughout our building, the calls got cut. The calls were recalled back, they called back on my telephone. There was interference with connection, and there were several different parts of the building that I had to walk around. It was not audible for the Police Department, and I don't know it even if it was the Fire Department that was on. My concern was the Waukesha Police Department finally arrived at my home 32 minutes later, and this was a 9/11 call. Fortunately, nothing happened, but I'm bringing this situation up. I don't know how it can be resolved, but it was a red flag to me because we are now, we have 44 units there, there's a lot of people, different ages. Someone has a heart attack, a stroke, you need somebody there, you're dealing with who's calling, phone calls are cut. I just wanted to bring that to attention. I don't know how it can be resolved. I know we have had difficulty with our reception in our building because it's primarily made out of concrete, and I don't understand exactly what is going on in the city as far as receptors and radio towers, but I just wanted to bring this up because this could be a very, this is a life-threatening situation, and fortunately, or, you know, unfortunately, the call was made by my error, and maybe it will save lives, but again, this was a very scary thing when they finally got a hold of me, that I came down to the door and it was 32 minutes later. So, thank you.
I have a quick question for you. Was that a, just for clarity, was it a cellphone or a landline?
Yes. No, a cellphone.
Okay, just wanna make sure we're clear on that.
Yeah, and it happened in the lobby, obviously in the elevator, lost contact, our second floor hall, and in our clubroom, which should have very good reception, but we were just getting, you know, a couple comments, and then the phone would just drop, and so, thank you, yes.
Thank you very much.
You'd said the Waukesha Police, were you, meaning, was it Waukesha Sheriff, or was it Oconomowoc Police that were?
No, it was definitely Waukesha Police Department. Yeah. And, and I even, even asked him, because he had trouble with the directory, how we have it, it's very complicated, and he told me that he had difficulty even just getting in, and I said, "Well, don't you have keys?" And he said, "It's only the Fire Department that has access to get into the building without anybody having to buzz somebody in." So maybe that's kind of a concern too with these larger condos down the road, that Police Department and Fire Department should have access to buildings because, well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill Pankop, City of Oconomowoc. And Cindy will look into that.
My name is Bill Pankop. I live at 1455 Riverdale Drive in Oconomowoc. I find it kind of humorous, really, but I noticed the disposition of the Police Emergency Dispatch Services is listed under New Business. This is the fifth time, fifth time, that we've gone through this, and apparently, a number of our aldermen are still not listening, but we have the Police Department and the people of Oconomowoc who have repeatedly, five times, have asked to keep the dispatch in Oconomowoc. And we still went ahead with a $32,500 study, which was over budget, was not budgeted for, a portion of it was, but not all of it, but we went ahead and did it. We still get the same thing. The people and the Police Department still want the dispatch to stay in Oconomowoc. Why do we have some of the aldermen continuously wanting to move the dispatch to Waukesha? The thing is, we're here asking questions, we get no response back telling us why everybody is so hell-bent on moving it to Waukesha. We want to keep it in Oconomowoc. Listen to the people, listen to the Police Department, and please, do what the people are asking. Keep it in Oconomowoc. Thank you.
Thank you. Rachel Italiano.
My name is Rachel Italiano of 608 South 10th Street in Watertown. I have strong and permanent connections to Oconomowoc, including my elementary school years, and still as a member of St. Matthew's Lutheran Church here. Right now, my mom is a dispatcher for the City of Oconomowoc, and we come from a family of law enforcement. I firmly believe that it's a mistake for Oconomowoc to even consider switching dispatch services to WCC. Several aldermen have alleged that it's dangerous to the Oconomowoc community to stay with a local dispatch center. That couldn't be further from the truth. Local dispatchers not only know the streets, but they're officers. That expensive, unnecessary report even said that the personal relationship between officers and dispatchers would suffer and would not exist if Oconomowoc goes to WCC. That's what is actually dangerous to the officers. Saying that Oconomowoc isn't safe is factually untrue. Those who make this claim are only doing so to create fear, which is unacceptable and unbecoming to their position. When the cost argument to switch to WCC didn't work, some people switched tactics and decided to play on people's fears by spreading lies. That's unacceptable. Furthermore, Chief Fister and his officers have made it clear that the safest option for the city is to keep the local dispatch center. The city needs to respect and trust that the people charged with protecting its citizens know best. Chief Fister and his officers know what the city needs in terms of public safety and public service better than anyone else here in this room right now. Refusing to take his recommendation is a slap in the face and a disservice to the community. I'd also like to quickly touch on the topic of transfer delays. Yes, it takes a tiny amount of time to transfer the calls between Oconomowoc and WCC and vice versa, but this is an extremely common practice in the United States. That study even said so. So are you saying that everywhere that does this is dangerous? Are you saying that Elm Grove and Guanaco aren't safe? Are you saying that the City of Waukesha isn't safe? I doubt it. Chief Fister called the study that made this claim flawed and inadequate, and I agree. There is absolutely no evidence in that report that the so-called delay is problematic. If you do really want to do something about the call transfers, demand that WCC change its protocol so that the necessary transfers happen faster. They should eliminate any unnecessary questions. Back in 2019, the chief even highlighted this as an issue, but nothing's been done about it. And here's an even easier solution: demand that WCC and Waukesha County give Oconomowoc their own 911 calls. With next-gen technology and other new technologies, these cellphone calls can easily be routed to Oconomowoc. Furthermore, the City of Middleton got their 911 calls back from Dane County years ago and appear to be doing just fine. And before you say that it's unsafe for the Fire Department, it's my understanding that even before fire switched to WCC, fire calls were a very small portion of the calls that came in to Oconomowoc dispatch. Rather than repeatedly attempting to destroy dispatch, let's empower the dispatchers to do their jobs. It's a shame and very disheartening that this issue keeps coming up again, especially since the Police Department consistently recommends and fights to keep its local dispatch center. You aldermen are elected to represent the people and are charged with giving voice to the people's will.
You can wrap up here pretty quick.
Okay. I have a stack of letters here showing support for local dispatch that I would like to submit into public record. It's my understanding there are, there are also letters from several police officers and the Police Department as a whole that will be read later. It's clear that the people have spoken. Just look at everyone here who's wearing gold or the gold ribbon here. We want to keep our, they want to keep their dispatch local. Finally, and I'll conclude, when you're sick, you seek the expertise of a doctor. If your car breaks down, you call the mechanic. If you're about to launch a NASA shuttle, you get an astronaut to pilot it. It's a simple analogy. Rely on the people with the expertise. Right now, the Police Chief and the officers are telling us that it's in the best interests of Oconomowoc's public safety to keep dispatch local. Thank you.
Thank you. Philip York. Philip York. From City of Oconomowoc.
I'm kind of soft-spoken, so if I'm not loud enough, let me know. First of all, this city's a wonderful place to live in, and it, a lot of that can't happen unless we have good leaders, so I'm assuming that, on the whole, you guys are doing a pretty good job. But this is the first time I've come here, and I'm motivated because I'm not sure how deeply this thing was dug into. I, I don't know why somebody decided that it's a good idea, but I'm here to tell you some ideas or some reasons that it's a very bad idea to transfer to the Waukesha Dispatch. The first one is, Waukesha Dispatch serves 28 cities. Now, you'd think, okay, well, so what? But if you look into it, you would expect that the record would be good, that there should be some evidence that being part of that, those 28 cities is a good thing. So that moves us from a population of 18,000 to well over 100,000. Now, you might say, well, so what? Every single city, every single one of those cities has a worse crime index than the City of Oconomowoc. And those, they're nice places, Sheneka, Pewaki, you go right down the list, every one of them has a worse crime index. So if you don't know that, you should. So what that means is, we'll be in a population of, from going from 18,000 to over 100,000, competing with other calls coming in, and guess where most of those calls are gonna come from? They're gonna come from cities with a higher index of crime. It varies from a little worse to a lot worse. Brookfield has, they're, they're on a scale of 50 for property crime. We're 19. We're, we're eight-point whatever, these are FBI statistics. Everybody on that list is worse than we are. So what does that mean from a practical standpoint? It means, when you call in, the response time from a cruiser going to the crime scene is not just based on where the cruiser is. It's also based, and you can look this up in many different studies, it's based upon the number of calls that are coming into the center. So now, you're suggesting that we go from where you may be one of two calls, probably being handled by dispatch, to who knows how many, certainly in the teens? And I don't really care about, well, they'll, they'll have enough staff, don't worry about it. That's the evidence, if you just look at all those cities, something should be better. Why is it worse? I mean, do you think that Brookfield has an incompetent Police Department? So the only element that's common to all of those cities is dispatch. Dispatch where you're one of 100,000. And believe me, when seconds count and chases have to be coordinated by a dispatch, it's not all just cops talking to each other like you see on TV. The dispatcher's part of that. They know where the cul-de-sacs are, they know where railroad crossings are. All of that is important for them to really know the city. So for all of those reasons, this is a really bad idea, and I hope you consider it and not vote for it.
Thank you. Ruben Diaz. City of Oconomowoc.
Correct. My name is Ruben Diaz. I live at 210 South Worthington Street. First of all, I want to thank all the aldermen and alderwomen for all your work, and I want to thank the Police Department and the Fire Department. I'm here for the dispatcher. I want her, I want the dispatcher to stay here, and I'm just gonna ask everybody to raise their hand if they want the dispatcher to stay. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Jennifer Doms. From the City of Oconomowoc.
Jennifer Doms, 646 East Cherry Street. I just want to say I am for keeping the dispatch, and I think that you gotta look at it a different way, too. We have a world-class dispatch already, why not utilize that? We can be the backup for someone else. We have excellent IT infrastructure, the IT room, everything is brand-new, and you might as well take advantage of that. In the study, I wasn't too keen on that WCCC has a very high turnover rate. That's a big red flag. We do not, except in the last two months due to the study, so I wasn't too keen on that either. So I would keep the dispatch, utilize it for the community, have it be a go-to dispatch, and what else? Let me check my notes. Um, let's see. That's about it. And I, oh, I took the Citizens Police class, if any of you have a chance to take that, if it's offered, you gotta take it, it's excellent. And I also took the assailant awareness class that you were there, that was excellent. So I would encourage everyone in your district to take that class and the Citizens Police class. So, thank you. Keep the dispatch.
Thank you. Ken Hero, City of Oconomowoc.
From 2019, a lot has changed. This isn't the fifth time that we've discussed dispatch, I would know that. I was at the county board when we started studying consolidated dispatch in 2001. I was there in 2003 when we implemented it. Chief Martin didn't like it, he said, "We should wait, let it, let's figure out how to make it work first." All right, that was pretty wise. So, we have these cellphones now, and no, it's not very smart to, the national standard is, calls go to, 911 calls from cellphones go to a consolidated dispatch. There are consolidated dispatches all over the United States that handle millions of residents, not 18,000 or not 380,000. This is old technology, it's not cutting-edge. It's, we waited, Chief Bagoon, by the way, if you want to know what the chief thinks, Chief Bagoon was in favor of consolidated dispatch. He saw it. Chief Bagoon recognized that we have a, right now, we have a Frankenstein 911 system with EMT and Fire going to the county, and Police going to the county and then coming back here. How many of you make calls to your family, friends, or to buy a pizza and have a 30-second delay, or a minute delay, or a transfer? What are you gonna do with your cellphone carrier every time you make a call and have a minute delay? But apparently, that's acceptable when it comes to calling the Oconomowoc Police Station, because guess what? Cellphones aren't going away. The new homes that you guys vote for, those new neighborhoods, they're not putting landlines in those homes. The new people that are coming in to buy the existing homes are not putting in landlines. Landlines are, they're gone. Okay, so, what has changed? I'd like to thank the council for actually having the courage and the wisdom to put the money in the budget last year, because what has changed from 2019, when the decision was made by the council with no information? And, you know, I know all of you would agree, if you're gonna make a decision for the benefit of the public, you should have all the information possible, and sometimes, that costs money. So if we're gonna spend $17 million over the next 20 years on the Oconomowoc dispatch, why don't we spend $35,000 to find out how efficient it is? So this council had the courage and ingenuity to do that. Now, if you could find a duplication in services and save hundreds of thousands of dollars a year in any department, Mark's department or Park's department, wouldn't you go to do that? Wouldn't you save 150 grand a year if you could? Especially if you're the fastest-growing community in Waukesha County and you have more obligations and responsibilities. Chief is asking for two new officers this year, more obligation and responsibility. Why not go find the bloated, duplicative government that you have and offload it to another level of government, which you certainly can do in this case? That's good business, that's good government. Consider if every unit of government didn't mine down and look for the duplication in services. Okay, where the hell are we? We're in Waukesha County. You're supposed to be conservatives, you're supposed to get rid of bloated government. This is bloated government. They do the same exact thing 20 miles from here.
If you could come close up your comments, please.
So, you got the study, you've all read the study, I tried reading the study, it's an excellent study. I've, I've done, I've used Matrix before. You have the information, you all should get the information so you can understand the Frankenstein problem we have and the excess money that we're spending, because if I call 911 now, it could, I won't get, what are they, four blocks away? It will take me a minute, maybe, to get them. Do the right thing, finally. Do the right thing, finally.
Thank you. Sharon Manke. City of Oconomowoc.
I'm Sharon Manke, and I live at 507 South Lapham Street here in Oconomowoc. I had the unfortunate opportunity to use the dispatch service a while back. But it, it was an amazing experience. I called 911 and I got, and, and she assured me that the minute I was on the phone with her, someone was on the way. And before she got through explaining to me what I needed to do, Mark Schreng came through my front door and said, "Don't worry, Sharon, I got this." It was an awful experience for me, but I cannot thank the police department enough for the immediate response time that I got and the support that I got from them. I hope that nobody else has to use the dispatch in that manner. But if you do, they're, they're truly there for you in a heartbeat. Our community is a wonderful community, and I think we deserve and expect a certain level of service. And, and that truly is that level of service. And I hope all the aldermen take into consideration, trying to give their constituents the level of service that they have come to know and expect from city government. I think we have a great, great police staff. And, again, the response time was incredible for me, and I can't thank them enough.
Did you call in a landline or a cellphone?
I did call in a landline.
Landline, okay, thank you. Thank you. Mike Hassler. City of Oconomowoc.
Mike Hassler, 989 Autumn Ridge Drive in Oconomowoc. I just have had so many experience with cellphones, with elderly people not knowing how to use them or using them properly. And as I look at the, all the aldermen, I know they all have cellphones, but I'm guessing they've all had problems with cellphones and getting them to work the way they're supposed to work. I'm here really to be an advocate for the elderly community, who, if they have cellphones that were given to them by their grandkids, maybe to call their grandkids, still would use their landlines to call to get the help they need. And I think our elderly community, I don't know, have any numbers about the disparity of age groups, but I believe we have enough elderly community that would rely on, on their landlines to get immediate and direct service from our police department. I'm, I'm very concerned about the, how remote we are from the center of Waukesha County. I think one of the benefits Oconomowoc has is being distant from the helter-skelter and the crime from the inner city that's moving to the outer suburbs, including Waukesha County. And I'd really like to not see that happen, but if response time has to go through Waukesha County without them having a rapid response time or not being able to get in touch with our, our policemen, I, I hazard to think that a Waukesha policeman would show up at my door if I needed assistance. And so I'm very much disturbed by the comment about new homes don't have telephone lines going into them. I'd like to see some proof of that, because I think there is a need for connections because there's too many different waves of energy flying around us right now that it makes it hard to get connected. So the awareness of our locality and awareness of our community, I think our police department is excellent for our community, and I think it should be given all the benefits to serve the community and to serve it in a short-term rather than a long-term response. Thank you very much.
Drew Starch. City of Oconomowoc.
Thank you. Drew Starch, 1274 Mamor Lane East. I'm going to keep it short this time since my voice was heard last time, and I hope it's heard again this time. Thank you, city council members, for stepping up as leaders in our community. I generally support your decisions and the mission of the city council. I moved to the city of Oconomowoc nine years ago to establish a family here because I support our progressive, small-city community and the values that it holds. I am here to ask you to keep our city dispatch. I am not going to go over all the reasons as I did the last time, and you will hear those again from Chief Pfister and the other members of our community. Keeping our dispatch local is one of the values that I hold high. We have been in the same place numerous times. You've heard from the city residents who are your constituents, and we've heard from experts on both sides of the table. Each time you have voted to keep our dispatch, this time should not be any different. The new study has shown what we already know and suspected and the small-cost savings potential along with it. But the values of this city are what's important to its residents. I would like to ask the council, why do we keep wasting our time and money and city resources by continuously bringing this debate back to the table? You've heard from the residents already. Why are we not focusing our time and city energy on getting our full 911 capabilities back and the recouping our costs from the WCC, which have been lax in service? So I ask you to please vote to keep our city values and keep our dispatch local. Thank you.
Chris Agamit? I'm not sure if I pronounced your last name right.
My name's Chris Agamit. I actually live at, in the Village of Summit, 2008 North Galindo Road. I actually work for the city of Oconomowoc Police Department. I have listened to WCC and obviously our dispatch since I'm under their control there. There's a huge difference between my safety when it comes to WCC and, and our dispatch. WCC tends to have a lack of employees right now, which is causing a lot of the merging. With that being said, there's a lot of people getting on the air at the same time. There's a lot of issues that are going on with, in my perspective, in my opinion, officer safety. I like our dispatch, I know them, they help us out in more ways than just dispatch. They help us out in other things. With that, keeping dispatch is, is a big part of our community. I think it's easy for us to overlook that. Our community is obviously growing, we're going to need a bigger community, reach more officers for our, our community as well. Getting rid of our dispatch is going to be one of the worst mistakes we ever do if we do go that way.
Thank you. Do we have any further comments from the audience? I do not have any more blue cards, so if you want to make a comment, I need a blue card, please. Thank you. Vicki Gertz. City of Oconomowoc. And if anyone else would like to talk, please fill out a blue card and we'll be ready for you. We just have one more after this. Vicki, all yours.
Vicki Gertz, 1281 Lilly Road. Love Oconomowoc. I think we need-
Pull the microphone down.
Oh, hi.
There you go.
Have to start over?
Yeah.
Okay. I love Oconomowoc. Our officers do an excellent job, and our city dispatchers do an excellent job. I'll say about five years ago, at 2:00 in the morning, I had a drunk person trying to break into my home. It was terrifying. I called dispatch. They kept me calm, but I let out a scream every time they were jamming my door. I was assured by that dispatch, and I could hear them, the officers en route. And they assured me, they told me, "They're turning down Heather Lane right now, and one's coming down Lilly Road from Poppy." Hey, they did a great job. I'm so appreciative. So yesterday, I took a walk in Oconomowoc, and I walked and I talked with young mothers taking their children to Greenland School. And I was asking them about, "Do you want to keep dispatch local?" "Of course, yes. Our city's growing. We need dispatch here." So I walked and I talked from 8:00 in the morning until 4:45. And got a bright idea of making some nice yellow sheets of paper. And I visited 22 businesses in the city of Oconomowoc. They were very appreciative of my visit. And I explained to them about keeping dispatch. They were all in agreement. And I collected about 144 names from 22 businesses. A few, I'm sorry, a few of my businesses were closed and I didn't get to pick up the forms. So I would like to enter this to the record, and you may do a count. I, I would really like for you to do the best thing for Oconomowoc. Dispatch is a wonderful tool for our officers, and we do support and back the badge. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. The last card I have right now is for Lynn Wright, city of Oconomowoc. And if you, anyone else would like to speak, if you could fill out a blue card, please.
Hello, everyone. Lynn Wright, 707 Marigold Street, Conowoc. I am for keeping dispatch local. In Alec Nemec's article in the October 14th edition, on page 6A, he states, quote, "The study also states that while both agencies are near having 99% of calls answered within 20 seconds, exceeding the 95% national standard, both agencies also fall well short of processing and dispatching calls within 60 seconds. Oconomowoc Dispatch had a rate of 61% of priority calls being dispatched in less than a minute, while WCC was at 61.2%," end quote. So this means that the transferring of calls from WCC to Oconomowoc does not delay emergency response time. In the event that we cannot get cell calls back, we are still operating at the same level as WCC. Therefore, there is no safety benefit in moving Oconomowoc Dispatch to WCC. There is no data to support that the emergency response will just, will decrease if Oconomowoc Dispatch moves to WCC. WCC giving 911 cell calls directly to Oconomowoc Dispatch is the clear solution, and has Rachel and has been stated, they've stated that the, the police chief, and they have tried to do this several times. And this is a question that needs, that must be answered tonight, is why can, why will WCC not release Conowoc cellphone calls to Oconomowoc Dispatch? It's the quickest, simplest, safest solution to this, what's been created into what shouldn't And if dual dispatch remains, response time can improve by changing WCC protocols of immediately transferring calls to Oconomowoc by asking for location first. I'm sure there are more protocols that can be reviewed as well. Please keep Oconomowoc Dispatch local. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any further comments from the public? If you could bring your blue card forward, please. Jane Owen, city of Oconomowoc and Nishoda.
Good evening, everyone. Just before I start my comments, many of you saw me outside City Hall today in support of dispatch. So you saw signs like this. I couldn't keep track of the number of honks. I'm sure the people trying to work inside City Hall did. I only had two negative responses, and they didn't come back to have civil discourse with me. The sign on the backside, I had a little more fun with. Most people didn't get to see it. So if you want to keep us happy, you're going to keep dispatch here. Just like some of you say, "A happy wife is a happy life." In response to Mr. Harold, an established family, established businessman, yes, we have the Matrix slides, which were extremely difficult to retrieve for the last two weeks from the city. And yes, we have read them. And yes, we have studied them. And we have analyzed them. So to call us out like that was not quite open and fair. Many questions were left vague and generalized from the Matrix study. So I'll start with the questions. What is enhanced performance from Matrix or from WCC? They have older equipment, as they stated two years ago. They still have the same equipment. Two years later, it's archaic. Are they waiting for us to join so we can pay the lion's share to update that equipment? I happen to have a variety of backgrounds with security. I was active-duty military during 911. I went overseas two months later. I can understand civilian security, contract security, like GSWS, Blackwater. There's only one other person in the horn that I know of, maybe two, who have military experience to understand this, to have any right to even open this question. So I'll give an analogy. Once upon a time, there was an event hall. Shortly before the event started, two of you have heard this, couple open seats left, one at the head table. Somebody walks up in a fancy outfit, seats themselves at the head table. Just before the event starts, somebody else comes up to the door, picks, humbly picks an open seat at the back of the hall. That was the guest of the honor for the evening. The one who sat themselves and invited themselves up to the front table had to be removed from the table and removed from the hall. That's how it feels for you to question what we have told you multiple times on keeping dispatch here. You have invited yourself in. Also, because I don't formally reside in the city of Oconomowoc, and we still own property here, I haven't had any, what I would consider satisfactory, interactions with WCC Dispatch. The emergency response, when they get there, great. The tone of voice, tone of words, reaction, comments from WCC, you either make the standard or you don't. They don't make the standard at all. Money is almost negligible. There's a lot of numbers not crunched in their vague, generalized categories. Performance isn't there, safety isn't there, timing isn't there. There is no reason to consider thinking about going to WCC Dispatch.
I'm going to have you work to wrap it up, please.
One more comment, then. I tried to do some research to find out where to respond on WCC, see what the complaints are, see what the problems people have had. Can't find it. They haven't come here to speak the last couple of months. Tried the Better Business Bureau, DEDCAP, Regulating Agency, SPS, Dispatchers Certifying Group. How do we get answers from these people? There's a reason they don't come and talk to us. They don't deserve our money. Keep Oconomowoc Dispatch here. We've told you again, and it's enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any further comments? Further comments from the public? Go one more time. Any further comments in this public session? To give the audience an idea, what we're going to be doing is moving on then to the next part of the city's agenda. This topic of dispatch is towards the end of the agenda, at which time, we have offered to both the Oconomowoc Police Department and the WCC, the opportunity to tell their stories, as well as a- the opportunity to tell their stories, as well as a question-answer session among the council. It's not a dialogue with the audience and these folks. It's a dialogue and an opportunity for the council to drill down to help them make an informed decision in their vote. So, that's how things will move forward. Thank you all for your public comments, and thank you very much for coming tonight. We'll move on to the consented agenda items. I'd like to entertain a motion.
So moves Zappel.
All in favor?
Aye.
On the committee reports to finance, Consider Act on Quarterly Grants and Donations to Council, the budget amendment. Ms. Sullivan? And she's getting married this weekend, so congratulations.
Okay, so, tonight is the third quarter budget amendments and grants to council. So, in your package, you have a list of the donations and grants received by the city. The total dollar amount was $100,950. That includes grants for the Emerald City mural that you see on the building next to us, and grants for the police body worn cameras, and a few others you'll see in your packets. One of the changes that I wanted to show you on here is at the bottom of, at the bottom of the grants and donations, there's a section for budget amendments. And in there, you'll see two reclassifying, kind of clean-up budget amendments. So, starting this year and moving forward, the non-resident sanitary license fees will be classified in the section with license fees. And the pilot payments will be in the miscellaneous revenue. So, this is the budget amendment to move those to those categories for 2021. In 2022, they're in their proper placement.
Any questions from council? To let the audience know, a lot of these next few items have already been dealt with at committee level. And so, they may come across as very, very important. They are. But they've done a lot of their due diligence, so don't think they're just rubber-stamping them, because they're not. I'd like to entertain a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the budget amendments as presented.
Mulder, second.
Any further discussion? Call, roll, please.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Zappel.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
And on to public services, Consider Act on Resolution 21-R2988, awarding the Rockwell Park grading design and bidding. Mr. Frye.
Thank you, Mayor. August 10th, the Common Council's part of our long-term finance plan approved, or made a motion to move forward with funding $300,000 towards the Rockwell Park. Those monies would be approved later this year and become available in 2022. We do have some funds in the 2021 budget, which were a part of $150,000 that were initially budgeted. We spent about $30,000 taking down the house and doing other couple of things. Doing the clock was one of them. So, we're looking to use some of those funds and get the project started. The project we're talking about tonight is the grading of the park. We've reached out to SCH. They are the firm that did the preliminary design work. We've asked them to provide a proposal to do a grading plan, obtain the permits, and bid out the project. And then, we would be coming back with that. Because we are, you know, so late in the year, we know that that work would not start until early part of 2022. So, we can use the funds that we have in the 2021 budget and move forward with this $25,000 not-to-exceed proposal, and then bid it out and have the actual work fall under the $300,000 that we are anticipating to be in place for 2022. So, we are recommending SCH to complete the grading plans, specifications, and bidding process in an amount not to exceed $25,000 for Rockwell Park.
Any comments for Mr. Frye? I'd like to entertain a motion, please.
Second, Douglas.
Any further discussion? Call, roll, please.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Zappel.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Well, moving on to Plan Commission items, we have four items this evening. We'll start off with Mr. Gallo on Consider Act on Ordinance 21-01020, correcting the legal description for Pine Ridge Estates West Annex to Territory. Please notice, council, that this is a first reading that can be waived, if you so wish. Mr. Gallo.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. We have four items on the agenda tonight that were all recommended from the Plan Commission. They all sent these forward with a positive recommendation on October 6th. The first item, as mentioned, is an ordinance correcting a legal description for Pine Ridge Estates West subdivision. During the development of this, it was determined that the lot lines were mistakenly placed on the platte. And when we did the original annexation ordinance in 2014, we went about six inches in too far. One of the residents said, "I think you're in on my property a little bit." And yes, sure enough, they found a pipe about a foot below the surface, a new pipe, and they based it off that. So, when they went back to the state of Wisconsin, they said, "Well, we would need to change the ordinance for the annexation, to amend that, to clear that lineup, as well as replat a subdivision." I've personally, in 20 years, never done a replat of a subdivision. It's extremely rare, but it's a correction instrument. So, this is more, the first two items, 9A and 9B, are both more housekeeping items. And a representative from the SCH engineering firm is here this evening. But I do recommend approval of the ordinance to amend the legal description to change that boundary of the southern boundary of Pine Ridge Estates West.
Do we have any questions on item 9A?
I'll move to approve Ordinance 21, waiving the second reading. Ordinance 21-01020, correcting the legal description for Pine Ridge.
Second, Zappel.
Any further discussion? Call, roll, please.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Zappel.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis. Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
And to our next item, Jason.
Yeah, item B is the final replat. Again, I talked about this, and this would now create new platte of survey for those affected lots with the new lot line.
Entertain a motion?
So moves Kavieski.
Second, Shellpepper.
Any further discussion? Call, roll, please.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Zappel.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
And just a personal comment, hats off to this developer for bringing it to our attention and just doing the right thing, which I, learning is very unusual. Thank you, Jason. Let's move on to Consider Act on.
Do we still charge them a fee for it, though? Do we still charge them a fee? No? You didn't charge them a fee?
Well, there was an application fee, yeah, $75.
Maybe we should incentivize them by not charging them a fee if they come to us.
So, let's move on to 9C and D, which are also tied together. Mr. Gallo.
Correct. Items 9C and 9D are very similar. They're condominium plats for Vespera, condominium Vesper 2, the second phase. It's addendums 2 and 3. This is a duplex, or duplex development on Valley Road. These are condominiums, and the plats do require the same process as a subdivision, which goes through Plan Commission with a recommendation to the Common Council. These things are the final phases for this project. So, once this is done, all they need is building permits. You'll never have another Vespera 2 approval before you. So, this is the, bringing closure to that development. This outlines in the report the number of buildings. But this project does go back over 10 years in the working. So, this is the final phase of it. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I know the applicant is in the audience here to answer any questions as well.
Like to entertain a motion, please.
So moves Kavieski.
Mulder, second.
Any further discussion? Call, roll, please.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Zappel.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
And to our last one.
Yes, this is the final addendum, number 3, and I did not talk about during Plan Commission meeting, the developer was here. He did say that they are going to be resurfacing the private drives within that development. And he's doing that even for Phase 1, which is kind of a distinct ownership group. But he's going to take it upon himself to resurface those roads in the spring of next year, when the development is closer to be completed. So, it's a very, it's a win-win situation for the city to have the developer put in some new, new private streets for this development.
Alderman Rosick.
Are all the streets in Vespera private?
No. No, St. Andrews Drive, the main drag, is.
Through the middle of it that goes to the lake, right? That's public, but the ones on the side?
Right. Testano Court and Vicco Pass, those are private drives that are in pretty rough shape right now.
Thanks, Jason.
Like to entertain a motion?
So moves Kavieski.
Rosick, second.
Further discussion? Call, roll, please.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Zappel.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. We're going to move on to new business. Consider an Act on Ordinance 21-01021 to redistrict the boundaries for the aldermanic districts. And again, council, it's a first reading. And we respectfully request it moves on to a second reading to waive, as this legally has to get to the state of Wisconsin tomorrow morning. Or today?
Tomorrow morning.
Okay, I guess tomorrow morning. Mr. Frye.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The only reason why I'm up here and not the city clerk or Jason Gallo, is they did work kind of hard on it. But at our last meeting, the direction was to go back, look at this. I indicated to the aldermen, we'd email out the, any different options that we were able to come to. We wanted the council to be able to see these, because it is important that this does get approved tonight. Both Diane Conan and Jason Gallo spent considerable part of a week. They looked at several different options, and I had actually shown a few of the aldermen one of them, which we did like. But it created a lot of issues, as Ms. Conan had spoke earlier. There's, the proposal that we're coming back with is the exact one that they brought on the meeting two weeks ago. As noted, this does, has minimal impact for the people that are actually changing districts this time. The other thing is, it comes down to the Waukesha County Supervisory Districts. And that's along the south side of the city. And in any other map that we were trying to propose, we ended up where there'd be split ballots with several hundred people. This one will have split ballots for some, probably less than 50. But, you know, when you, which is manageable within the polling places. But when you're talking several hundred, that causes confusion. So, it was the consensus of the three of us that to come back with this 2020 proposed draft again and recommend its approval.
Questions for Mr. Frye? Alderman Rosick.
Mark and Diane and Jason, I appreciate you looking at it again. I know a couple of us had questions. As I indicated, if there wasn't anything we could do, and I think you even sent an email to us that you actually liked the other option you came up, because it was more confined districts. But then, it goofed everything up with the supervisor, and that's totally understandable. I'm happy with the maps as they're presented now. You know, I think our big problem was trying to avoid those fingers kind of going up. And it just doesn't seem like we can do it. So, I appreciate you guys taking the time to look at it, and I think we got a good result.
All right, thank you.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Yeah, same. I guess I'm wondering, though, is like, what happens in 10 years? Are we going to keep having these fingers? You know, are we going to, that's the only thing, are we going to have to rip off a Band-Aid at some point? No. What's the plan, then?
So, you know, we're going to have to look at where the growth areas are. So, more than likely, you're going to see growth in the first, third, and fourth districts. They have everything. Second district's in the middle. So, first, third, and fourth are probably going to have to shrink from the center of the city out. And the second will have to grow in the middle to have an equal number of residents in each one of them. So, that's probably what the next maps will look like in 10 years, is you'll see the second district coming down Wisconsin Avenue and being on the north and south side of that. First district to the northeast side, third and fourth then, taking the south side of the city.
Alderman Kavieski.
Would it be fair to say that District 2 is more mature than in the city? Middle school?
Oh, definitely better-looking.
Not growing or improving.
Right, yeah.
No comment from the mayor. Any other comments? Any other comments from council for Mr. Frye?
I'll move to approve the Ordinance 21-01021 to redistrict the boundaries as set forth in the documents, waiving the second reading.
Second, Zappel.
Any further discussion? Call, roll, please.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Zappel.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
And moving on is Consider Act on Resolution 21-R2987 to divide the city of Oconomowoc into wards pursuant to the state statutes. So, basically, it's reallocating those wards, so it's done appropriately. Ms. Cohen, do you have any comments on that?
Just that, most of the wards have not changed, but the ones with, in District 4 and District 3, they've been aligned a little bit differently to contain all the split ballots only in one ward, which makes it so much easier to manage.
Are those split ballots on, kind of near me? The fire, perhaps farms area? Because we're getting a new county supervisor, right?
Way at the very bottom of District 3, and then more kind of halfway between District 4. But being able to realign the ward boundary lines and maintain the 600 to 2,100 people was the key. And we were able to do that the way the district lines were drawn.
Thank you.
Like to entertain a motion?
So moves Kavieski.
Second, Ellis.
Any further discussion? Call, roll, please.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Zappel.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper. Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
As a point of order, this one did not have a second reading or first reading. Is that okay?
No, because it's a resolution.
Okay, so that's, okay.
Right.
Just, I just wanted to be sure that, because of the timeline tomorrow, that we're not screwing anything up.
Thank you.
Moving on to Consider Act on Disposition of the Police Emergency Dispatch Services. What we've, what we've done for the audience and for our council is we have a representative of WCC here, and we have a representative, our police chief, for the Oconomowoc Police Department. We've allotted 20 minutes for each of them to talk, present, answer questions. And those questions, again, are going to be among the council and those two presenters. So, if we could start off with WCC, if you could come to the podium, please. And it is all yours, sir. If you could please identify yourself for the council, so everybody's aware.
First, first matter of business, the gentleman that was sitting over here at the far left, and he's left his MacBook up here. Do I give that to the police department, or do I give it to?
One of the new ones?
That's a nice one. I'll take, yeah.
Thank you very much.
It's evidence right there.
Great. So, welcome. Thank you very much, and we look forward to hearing your feedback and thoughts. After you give your presentation, council, you can ask a few quick questions. Then, we'll have the Oconomowoc Police Department do the same thing, ask a few quick questions. Then, we'll bring both of you up there. And it's pretty much up to you, council, questions that you would like to ask either one of the representatives of the two options for the city of Oconomowoc. Go ahead, sir.
Okay. So, I'm Chris Becker. I'm current operations manager at Waukesha County Communications. I began my career in dispatch at WCC, was promoted to supervisor, and earlier this year, took over the role of operations manager. I say that to say that I understand and know the role that dispatch plays in public safety. It's a privilege to lead the incredible team of dedicated professional dispatchers that we have, and it's amazing to see the work that they do on a daily basis. I want to thank those of you that came to WCC to experience exactly what we do firsthand, with your own eyes, own ears. I hope it was eye-opening to see that some of the differences, I mean, there's a lot of similarities, right? But there's a lot of differences as well between us and the Oconomowoc Police Dispatch. I do not intend to disparage Oconomowoc Police Dispatch in any way. That's not why I'm here. That's not what we believe in at WCC, and it's not who we are. So, I have a few brief talking points. So I have a few brief talking points, and then I'd be happy to attempt to answer any questions you guys have after that. First and foremost, sorry, didn't realize how cottonmouth you get up here. First and foremost, we believe that the Matrix study that was conducted is a fair, unbiased assessment of WCC. We participated in that study willingly. We met with Stu and David when they were onsite, conducted interviews, they conducted interviews with us, Gary Bell, our director, myself, our supervisors, quality assurance team, and our dispatchers as well. We also hosted several calls throughout the duration of their study with them to ensure that we were providing the information that they were looking for in a timely manner, and that they understood that information when they received it. So I'll get into my, my main talking points here. Most of these were derived through questions that I, I got from aldermen that came to visit WCC, and by watching the October 5th meeting and discussion that was held therein. So I'll start with probably one of the main talking points, our, our current staffing at WCC. I am aware that the email I sent to our police protocols reps at WCC was read at the October 5th meeting. I sent that email to our protocols reps in full transparency, knowing that we were implementing some operational changes on our end in order to meet the needs of, of our agencies that we serve. It was not asked that I send that email again. I believe in being fully transparent as often as possible, and that was just an easy way to do that. So in consolidated nine-in-one, and I believe the matrix, matrix study references this, there's always going to be ebbs and flows in, in staffing. We're not immune to the challenges that exist within consolidated PSAPs, or for that matter, any other industry right now in this day and age in the world. That being said, I believe that this year was somewhat of an anomaly. We had a retirement. My predecessor, the previous operations manager, retired in end of April. I assumed that role. With that came a few internal promotions that opened up a few more vacancies. And we've obviously had some, some turnover in resignations as well. But like I said, we're not immune to that. I believe it's an anomaly. Our previous turnover rates are below the national average that was presented in the matrix study. I believe them to be somewhere around 19, 20%, which again, national average presented in the matrix study, I believe, said 29%. So currently, WCC has 39 full-time equivalent dispatchers. That includes six in training status, as well as, that does not include our seven supervisors. All seven of those supervisors are fully certified, can handle any position on the dispatch floor, as well as call-taking responsibilities. To address a point that Chief Fister attempted to make at the October 5th meeting, I recognize, we recognize that WCC has always had some washout within our training program. That's not necessarily always a bad thing. We want the best, and we expect the best. We have high expectations of our trainees, and our training team does as well. So recognizing that, we moved earlier this summer to make some adjustments to our classroom training. We realized that it was kind of an overly broad focus, that focused on multiple aspects of dispatch, rather than kind of building the building blocks beneath them and letting them grow when they get to the dispatch floor. So we tailor our classroom training, that's the very first phase of training, to call-taking and their call-taking process. When they get on the dispatch floor, they're kind of acquiring a lot of the radio stuff via osmosis, as we say, but then they also have dedicated time on police dispatch channels as well as our fire channel, when they get to that point in their training. That being said, our current six trainees, at this point in time, historically, we would have seen one or two trainees wash out at this point in their training. They're nearing the end of their phones training, which is the very first step of on-the-job training at WCC, and they're all doing phenomenally well. I fully expect all six of them to make it through their training. And that sign-off should happen sometime mid to late November, possibly early December for a couple of them. I'll go in a little deeper on some of the training, as well as mentioned in the study. WCC does have a robust continuing education program right now for our current dispatchers. We utilize a software called Virtual Academy, a virtual training platform, obviously. They host multiple different training, I guess, products from multiple different agencies, organizations, including the nine-in-one Training Institute that focuses on the mental health side of dispatch, as well as ApCo and NINA, two of the kind of governing bodies of, of nine-in-one dispatch. That platform also has the ability to host homegrown trainings. We have a, a pretty significant quality assurance team that focuses right now on emergency medical dispatch calls. In 2022, we'll be expanding that program to fire calls as well as police calls. So not only is that quality assurance team responsible for reviewing calls and providing feedback, they're also tracking agency trends to make sure that we're providing the best service possible with every call that we take. Once a trend is identified that could be heading in the wrong direction, or just needs to be tweaked a little bit, it's also their responsibility to push out continuing education required, continuing education to our dispatch staff in an effort to quell that, that trend. Another big talking point so far in this discussion that, that I've heard anyways from questions from the aldermen that came and met with me, as well as listened to that meeting, has been the patching of Area 3 and 5. I understand where those concerns are coming from. I'll give a brief background of patching channels at WCC. Areas 1 and 2, which is the city and town of Brookfield Police Departments and the city and New Orleans Police Departments, were involved in a lean project that was hosted by WCC, started in mid-2019, carried on through 2020. And that study was analyzing radio utilization, so talk time, how long a dispatcher or an officer was pressed, keyed on the radio and talking, to determine if there was a more efficient way that we could utilize our staff. Areas 3 and 5 were never a part of that conversation. They were never intended to be patched to help our operation become more efficient. However, at the end of the summer, end of August, it became apparent that it was going to be a necessity to make some pretty drastic changes to our operations in order to continue to meet the needs of our partnering agencies in the field. And I'll, I'll expand upon those needs and, and how we were able to better adapt with that with the patching a little bit later on. I will say that it is our goal to work towards eliminating this patch, walking it backwards as soon as we, we start getting some of our trainees signed off. So we're going to make data-driven decisions to walk that patch back. We're going to pull the, the radio utilization data from our radio system. We have a really great financial analyst that assists us in making crazy Excel sheets that I would never be able to do myself. Take the averages of talk time per hour of the day, day of the week. I think we're looking at about a five-week, or a five, yeah, five-week timeframe for all of October. So we have preliminary data. It's not very accurate. Area 3 and 5, from March 1st through May 2nd, I say it's not very accurate, because those channels weren't patched at that time. Looking at that data right now, I can tell you that the first shift that will be unpatched moving forward, once we get the staffing in place to do so, will be second shift from 2:00 PM to 2:00, or 2:00 PM to 10:00 PM. That's our, our current second shift. Those hours of the day, by far, are the busiest on the Area 3, 5 patch, so that would be the first step in the ballgame, walking that patch back and getting back to our more normal operations. So getting back to the necessity of patching, Area 3 and 5 at the end of the summer, it's a priority of ours to keep our dispatch operation flexible and nimble, and able to respond to the needs of our partner agencies in the field that are responding to ongoing events. Every event is different. We deal with a lot of high-priority events that, that include multiple agencies, and we're generally the ones coordinating that multi-agency response. So when we patched Areas 1 and 2 and 3 and 5 together, we recognized that there may be an uptick in what we call 1033 traffic or emergency traffic. When you have more agencies on one channel, if we have one agency responding to a potential, potential officer safety-involved call, they might call 1033 traffic, or dispatch might call it for them, recognizing the situation could have officer safety implications. So what that basically does is lock down the channel for all those officers responding to that one call, and then everybody else on that channel goes to a different call. We recognize that there would probably be an uptick in, in that kind of event, so we staffed an extra call taker throughout the majority of the day in order to assist with that and give us that flexibility. And I know that brings up a question of, why didn't you just leave them unpatched? It's the same amount of people. But if we leave them unpatched, it takes away our flexibility and our ability to adapt our response internally to what's going on in the road. So that kind of addresses the patching. I'm sure there'll be further questions about that moving forward. Happy to attempt to answer those. Next talking point was the transfer delays. I'll point to framing element number one of the study that reads, and I quote, "It is crucial to minimize delays in service response for effective service delivery to the community." I want to correct one piece of misinformation that has been floated surrounding this conversation, specifically regarding WCC and our call-taking practices. And that is the notion that WCC has created the issue of transfer delays based on how we ask questions or the policies that we follow. That couldn't be further from the truth. We follow emergency medical dispatch and emergency fire dispatch protocols, written into those protocols, as well as into our policies. We answer every nine-in-one call with, quote, "911, what is the address of your emergency?" Anybody that knows anything about dispatch, has ever worked in dispatch or worked around a dispatcher, knows that location is the single most important piece of information that we can gather. If we don't know where you're calling from, we don't know where to send the help. That is the first piece of information we gather on every call that we take. Just to further explain the process of how we determine when we transfer a call, the second piece of information, so you have location first, second piece is the callback number. We confirm a callback number with the caller, just to make sure that if we dropped that call for any reason, we know that we're calling them back directly. It wasn't a mishap in, in the phone system or whatever, and we're confident that we're attempting contact at their actual phone number. So the idea is, or well, I guess, step three in the process, then, we would ask, give me a brief description of what's going on. As soon as we identify that it's a police-only event, that call is transferred immediately to the city of Oconomock Dispatch. So the idea that WCC has self-created this transfer delay, again, couldn't be further from the truth. It's written in our policies, and it's written in every protocol that we follow as far as call-taking goes. Next one, talk about interoperability in our surge capacity. Interoperability is really the essence of what we do as dispatchers and in dispatch operations. We exist to coordinate responses to emergency situations. WCC has the greatest patching authority out of any PSAP in Waukesha County. That's not only used to patch channels together when we needed to this year, but it's used to streamline communications within multiple jurisdictions, multiple agencies responding to the same event. It's more effective, more efficient when channels are patched, rather than us trying to communicate information between one, one channel to another. A couple of examples of that, of patching, would be the Roundy's incident that happened. Was that early this year or late last year? The Heartland Delafield officer-involved shooting, there's a lot of patching involved with those, as well as the robbery and manhunt that occurred in Oconomock earlier this year. WCC consistently utilizes our radio system to the full extent. And what I mean by that is we have a ton of interoperability resources at our fingertips on our radio console. So one example I'll give, the Village of Butler had a planned event at Skate Land, and I think this was 2019. They had a Waukesha County Sheriff's Deputy assisting with crowd control for when that event let out. When it did let out, there was a large fight in the parking lot, and both the Village of Butler officer and the Waukesha County Sheriff's Deputy called 1078. 1078, that's four numbers, well, two numbers, I guess, that no dispatcher ever wants to hear. That's our, oh crap, officer needs assistance and they need a fast call. No officer wants to call that either. So we have internal policies, procedures that we follow when we get events like that. We follow them to a T. We air all that information on Areas 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5, get anybody and everybody going. We called surrounding PSAPs in Waukesha County and let them know that we had this event ongoing. Then we hit up Milwaukee County Agencies on our radio system. Instead of making multiple phone calls, we hopped on OA Law Call, that's the radio channel that we use to communicate with surrounding PSAPs in Milwaukee County. And within five minutes, we had 23 squads on scene to assist those officers. So just one example of what interoperability looks like for us. We take officer safety extremely seriously. I think anybody in the dispatch business would say the same thing. It's our number one priority to get officers, our first responders, home safe to their families every single night. And I believe to a T, that would be what our dispatchers would say if you asked them that question. WCC is also Oconomock's current backup facility. And we have, even in the past couple months, taken nine-in-one calls when Oconomock's nine-in-one system has gone down for whatever reason. I understand technology issues. I mean, number one problem with technology is technology problems, right? So those kind of things happen, but we're there. I believe Alderman Rozak was at our facility when those nine-in-one calls went down in Oconomock, and he saw just how disruptive that was to our operations. It's not. We can absorb that work seamlessly with no issues. And then the other thing I want to talk about is our surge capacity. So I think this is really something that sets apart consolidated dispatch centers from single-seat dispatch centers. Our ability to expand our operations to meet the needs of our partners in the field. We have the ability to upstaff for pre-planned events. One example is the Falls Fest. I think it's Memorial's, Memorial Day weekend every year in the falls. They have like 30 officers on scene. They request a dedicated dispatcher to monitor that. We can provide that. We upstaff for incoming weather events, whether it be winter weather or summer weather events. End of August, we had a, a wind event that swept through the southern part of the county, really kind of wreaked havoc down there. We had upstaffed, second shift that came through, we upstaffed for the entire shift, just one, one call taker, about 20 minutes. Well, as soon as it hit the county, we knew that wasn't going to be enough. The supervisor on duty sent out a call for help for other dispatchers to come in. Within 30 minutes, we had four additional dispatchers, one additional supervisor, and myself in the building, logged in and assisting. Another example of that would be the Heartland Delafield officer-involved shooting. That incident happened on third shift. We have eight dispatchers and one supervisor in the building. Our supervisor sent out the call for help pretty early on in that event, and within 30 minutes, within 20 minutes, we had three additional supervisors, sorry, wrong event, we had four, four additional dispatchers and three supervisors in the building and logged in, helping to coordinate responses to that unfortunate event. And that was a huge response. I think we had 90-some events on our CAT system alone that doesn't include any of the surrounding counties, State Patrol, DNR, and all those others that assisted. So just a little bit to help explain what we can do as far as surge. And really, no matter what our staffing situation is at the time, our dedicated team answers the call when that critical call for help goes out. They are the essence of public service in my eyes. So in conclusion, WCC is a highly, highly professional organization. We pride ourselves on the service we provide to our partner agencies and all those that live, work, and play in Waukesha County. The ability to expand our operations and, and handle that surge sets us apart from any other PSAP in Waukesha County, and probably many within Southeast Wisconsin. We're focused on continued learning, providing feedback to ensure that we provide the best possible service to those in need. Anyone knows nine-in-one, people don't call us on their good days, right? So I want to thank you for your time, and I'll attempt to answer whatever questions you may have.
So we'll take a few minutes if you want to ask some specific questions. We won't, you don't need to worry about getting all your questions in, but there may be a burning question you have right now, go ahead, and then we'll have Chief Fister come up. Any questions initially? Alderman Mulder?
The staffing level is, I think, top of mind for me and probably other aldermen. What do you think, what is the timing to be at what you would consider full staff? And what is the timing on, you know, hopefully disbanding at least the second shift of the 3, 5 patch and the whole patch eventually?
Sure. So we just closed our application process for our next hiring. That next, we're looking to hire another six, and they'll start January 13th. Obviously, public service, there's longer hiring process and that sort of thing. Like I said, we will look to walk back that patch, starting with second shift, probably. I want to see the, the real data of when those channels are, actually, have been actually patched. I want to get into that data. So we're collecting that data through October 31st, because we know nothing's going to change before then. change before then. And once we have that data from our radio services, we can really dig in and make informed decisions based on the data to start walking that back. But that will happen, like I said, I anticipate our trainees to begin being signed off mid to late November, possibly early December for a couple of those. And as we get them counting in rotations in the schedule, that's when we'll start walking that back. We don't want to rip the Band-Aid off and put us back to right where we were. When we implemented that patch, it saved about 2,000 hours of overtime every 49 days. So, we're in a good spot now as far as overtime goes with the patch implemented, and we want to incrementally walk that down as it makes sense to do so.
Alderson Spiegelberg.
Thanks for coming, Chris, I appreciate it. Thanks for all the information on WCC. I know it's a great organization, but I also know there are a lot of things that you wouldn't be able to do for us that our dispatchers do now. One of those is live monitoring of our schools, our courts, and our beaches. So, if one of our dispatchers saw a situation at this time, they would be able to dispatch immediately to a squad. If we went to WCC, the clerical staff at OPD would be loosely monitoring those live-feed cameras for those court schools and potentially beaches. My understanding is that if they notice something that needs to be called in, they cannot go directly to a channel to dispatch a squad. Is that correct?
That could be part of the discussions that we would have after today, depending on the vote. We have had agencies where clerks have come over the air. I think there's only one that has done that, it's one of the recent transfers. So, that could be part of the discussion. I don't really have a firm answer on that right now.
Okay, are there any other communities that you have that agreement with now?
No.
Okay.
Well, besides the one, and I don't even know if there's a formal agreement in place. I don't know that if there were something life safety-related that we would hesitate from gathering that information as quickly as possible.
But if they don't have a radio channel to dispatch out to, wouldn't they have to call 911, call you at the center, and then you have to log into the system to see those cameras?
Yeah, we have access to school cameras. We don't have any other beaches or courts that we monitor. We have access to school cameras in each pod and several other school districts that we provide that same service to.
But a call would have to be made, and then you would have to log into that school's cameras, is that correct?
Yeah, it'd be the same, same thing as if we took a 911 call for an event at that school. It'd be the same exact process.
Okay, but that seems like a delay to me, and I think I'd be interested in hearing what Captain Fister, or Chief Fister has to say about that, too. Thank you.
Alderman Douglas.
Going back to Alderman Mulder's question, so you're talking about walking back that patch between the 3-5, when these six are currently done with their phones training? So, it's kind of a two-part question. Your next six that you're anticipating to hire in January, what's the timeframe till then they are certified to be on the radio with their classroom process and their phones training?
So, the current group that should be signed off mid-November started the last day of July.
About four months?
Roughly.
Okay. So, the second part of that, I mean, the study talks about the transition period is going to be six to 12 months. So, if we're looking at a six-to-12-month transition period, you're essentially looking at 32 FTEs now, and your top is 50, so you're looking at it being at 46 when those 12 are done, if you don't lose anybody?
Potentially.
So, prior to us coming, you'll probably be close to full staff?
Potentially, yeah.
Hopefully.
Yes, hopefully, that's a better word.
Any other questions before Alderman Kavieski?
With staffing again, even though you will hopefully be fully staffed by the time, if that goes into transfer, you were able to take calls a couple weeks ago and would be our backup as of right now?
Yeah, absolutely.
If any events happen.
Right. We had a meeting last Tuesday with Chief Fister, Captain Brad Tim, and a conglomerate of others from Oconomock, and part of that discussion was making sure that we'd be able to assist them should something happen, and we need their services, or they need our services sooner, and we're prepared to make that happen. It wouldn't change much for us.
Alderman Rozick.
Thank you for coming out, Mr. Becker. You mentioned something about the Roundy's incident and WCC patching channels and taking over. Can you tell me what else you guys did during that event?
Sure.
You know, you guys, I know you have a mobile command center, was anything like that?
Yeah. So, we took three calls, three 911 calls, I believe, for the, it might have been four, for the incident at Roundy's. That incident, we routed, it was presented to us like an EMS call. There was no mention of a gunshot or anything like that. So, we routed EMS, Western Lakes, fire was on scene. We also obviously notified Oconomock Police Dispatch as soon as able, as soon as the call was routed. So, they got on scene, Western Lakes got on scene. We had more information that there was something fishy going on here, it didn't sit right. We relayed that information to Western Lakes and to Oconomock Dispatch. As the event unfolded, we obviously had numerous agencies surrounding mutual aid responding to Oconomock. So, that's our responsibility to coordinate that mutual aid response. Oconomock requests it, and we dispatch it. It was caused a little bit of, I guess, confusion, hesitation, there are miscommunications because we're communicating between two dispatch agencies, trying to coordinate the response to one event. Eventually, Waukesha County Sheriff's Department, or mobile command post was dispatched out. We have an incident dispatch team. It's a team of highly-trained dispatchers that respond out into the field and take on that dispatch, or that singular event dispatching from the command post. And really what that does is takes the stress of that one single event off the dispatch floor so that we can maintain everything else that's going on in the county. That's something that you don't see, as far as I'm aware, anywhere else in Wisconsin, an incident dispatch team like that. And then, at some point, when the mobile command post was requested, we ended up taking primary dispatch responsibilities for that.
One other question I had was, I understand WCC has the ability to do what's called iPOS. Can you explain to me what that is, and has the city, have the city residents been, I guess, has it been used recently?
Sure.
To your knowledge?
Yeah. So, iPOS is a tool for public notification that was developed by FEMA. At the current time, only county governments have the ability to send messages through iPOS. So, it's called a wireless emergency alert. I believe Oconomock has AlertSense. We use AlertSense as well. So, basically, you'd be sending a reverse 911 with AlertSense. It's called an ETN, and you draw a polygon or a circle around whatever area you want notified of what's going on, shelter in place, please, you know, avoid the area, whatever sort of instructions you want to give. So, if we send an ETN, which is available through AlertSense, that only hits people that sign up publicly. So, go to the website, put your name, phone number, address in, or the white pages. We go over the top of that with a wireless emergency alert. Like I said, that's set up through FEMA, it's accessed through AlertSense for us, so we use the same kind of system that Oconomock PD uses. So, we draw our polygon, and within that creates a geo-fence around that area, and every cellphone in that area will get the message that we're sending. And honestly, probably a lot of other people, too, just based on where that technology is right now, but everybody within that polygon will receive that alert. And we have used it recently. We used it for the robbery and the manhunt that ensued thereafter, and we recently used it for Western Lakes for a gas leak in downtown Oconomock as well.
Thank you, Mr. Becker.
Well, thank you very much, Chris. Let's have you take a breather. We'd like to ask how you can drink a little more water, like I'm doing as well here, and Chief Fister from the Oconomock Police Department.
Thank you, Mayor, for letting me speak tonight regarding this issue. I just want to start out with saying, as chief, I'm responsible for the safety of over 18,000-plus individuals, residents of our city, businesses, commercial and industrial developments, along with the countless visitors we have every single year that enjoy our fine city. And I want this council, the administration, and our community to know that I take our public safety very seriously. With that, once again, we're here to discuss maintaining our local dispatch. I'm here to present and provide support and justification to keeping our dispatch center. The Matrix Study showed that both of our dispatch centers are quality dispatch centers. WCC does an outstanding job, and our dispatchers here at our local dispatch center do an outstanding job as well. But, we are different. One of the differences, WCC is a communication center. That's defined as an agency charged with the responsibility of handling and controlling communication traffic. The City of Oconomock Dispatch is a local dispatch center. It provides some features that a community, communications traffic, just like the communication center at WCC, but it provides a lot more. Provides added duties to serve the local community. It can adapt and change to the local community's needs without approval from other communities. I think that's a key point here. I've lived in Oconomock for 21 years, I've been at this department for 21 years, and I can tell you from the bottom of my heart, this is a unique community. We pride ourselves on being independent, we have our own utilities, we go our own way, and our community likes that. So, here I am saying, a dispatch center that can adapt and change over time is what we need. And that's what we've had for a lot of years. Our dispatch center has grown from being in the tiny building across from the PD that we are, from where we are today, to the big building across the street. This is growing and changing with the times. I want to talk about the big topics here, the critical first minutes of 911 calls. That's what this comes down to. I've heard many Aldermen ask the questions about delays, and is that going to cost us lives? And that's the question we have to answer today. I was going to go into detail dissecting a LAN 911, how that works, how it comes in, and then dissect a cell call, and how that comes in and so forth. Every Alderman in here has been to WCC and been to our fine dispatch center as well. How do I explain that to the community in layman's terms so they understand? And I've struggled with that. And I'm telling you, I had three or four pages written down about, oh, this is the landline, this is a cellphone. And then, when I got to the end of that, I went, well, that was just a lot of waste of time, okay? So, here's what I'm going to say, and I think I can narrow this down. What really counts is when that call is placed and answered to when the help is on the scene. That's the true measure of if we're doing a good job. And going through this process, I assure you as Chief of Police, what happens on our landlines and what happens with our cell calls, and I give thanks to WCC for working with us as well, and setting up protocols, and the list of protocols, I think, that was distributed by the interim city administrator prior to this council meeting. We have worked with them closely to reduce those times down. And what happens is with their fine dispatching and following the protocols that are in place to narrow that time down, we are getting there faster and beating Western Lakes Fire to immediate medical attention calls. I can tell you right now, standing in front of you, I just polled the last two years of calls between 911 landlines, 911 cells, on the times that we have beat Western Lakes Fire or tied them getting to calls for service, and I can assure you that people's lives are not in danger because of transfers taking place. One of the great things about cell phones is the ever-changing technology. What I want to say here tonight is WCC does get all the 911 cell calls. There's no doubt about that. I think everybody here is aware that we have asked to receive those calls, and we're not the only community that has made that request to the county. The county's response to that is it'll jeopardize surrounding areas, jurisdictions, because those cell calls go to a tower, and then, in order to pinpoint it, has to be triangulated, and you don't know what dispatch center it should go to immediately. Well, I got good news. Because AT&amp;T won the state contract for next-generation 911, what that is entailing is called ESI NET, and the great technology will help Oconomock. Here's what's going to happen. When you look at this new system out there, it's based on the caller's location. No longer does it go off of a tower, it goes off of the GPS right on your phone. So, I'm going to give you an example. The boundary in the City of Oconomock, Brown Street by Piggly Wiggly, if I stand on one side of the street, I'm in the town of Oconomock. If I stand on the other side of the street, I'm in the city of Oconomock. Currently, my car, I get in a traffic accident out there, I dial on my cellphone, it goes to WCC, and no fault of theirs, we have to ask questions to determine, you know, what side of the street you're on, who we have to call for police services. If there's injury, it's Western Lakes, there's no doubt about it. That's in their jurisdiction. But here, with the new technology that AT&amp;T is coming out with, what's going to happen is I can stand on the city side of the road, and it will automatically send me to the City of Oconomock Dispatch Center. If I stand on the other side of the road, it will automatically send me to the town. There's no question anymore. We can draw the line on any boundary to make that determination. So, we are not affecting any other jurisdictions on that. Some of the losses that we'll have going to WCC, we're kind of hit on a little bit before. I'm not going to go into all the detail that I did in the last presentation, I'm not going to bore you guys. I mean, we've all been looked at the study and so forth. But I think there's a couple significant things I just want to point out, and that is the Lake Country Municipal Court, the City Hall, panic alarm buttons. We'll still monitor those with, if we keep our 24/7 clerical staffing in there if we go to the county. But like, the question was asked, I know maybe of one or two occasions where a clerk got on the air to provide information to squads on the road. The standard protocol of WCC is they need to place a 911 call to WCC to get a response for that. That is now a delay in service. Whereas, right now, we monitor those panic alarms, and our dispatcher puts that over the radio. I will challenge anybody, a radio will always beat a telephone. You will get faster service over a radio than you do by calling on a cellphone. One of the other areas is park and rec, I think Alderman Spiegelberg asked that question, the lifeguards, we currently monitor that. There's missing children, there's somebody missing in the water, we're, our dispatch is getting that right away, and we have officers en route immediately because we're monitoring that radio communication. WCC would not be monitoring that. And once again, no fault of their own, that's just, they're a communication center, and they're monitoring all the police and fire EMS calls. But we would have to have our lifeguards get on a cellphone and call 911 to report it, and then a squad to be dispatched. Once again, a delay, where right now, we have the people, our dispatchers monitoring that, who are getting squads there immediately. And there's a bigger picture to that. We can get there and find the kid, we can stop the major response of Western Lakes Fires, water rescue teams from coming, fire engines, ambulances tearing through our city, creating a hazard, okay, of possibly endangering our public and those officers and the fire department in driving. And we can resolve that case, which happens many times, we locate the child, you know, over by the concession stand. We locate the child, you know, over by the concession stand, you know, in the bathrooms, somewhere else, and that prior to their response. I want to talk about officer safety. The study talked about mutual aid. And I want to make this clear. Our officers are not in jeopardy. They're getting the mutual aid they need and we are providing the mutual aid to the surrounding communities that are out here. And how do we do that? Surrounding communities, summit, town, village of Oconomock Lake, they're monitoring our channels. They hear it come over. When our officer says, hey, we need mutual aid, it comes over our channel. They hear it. By the time WCC dispatches them, a lot of times their response is, I already copied. I'm en route. So there is no delay in mutual aid by having a WCC channel and our channels. It works the way it is now. Radio saturation. Boy, I could go on for hours on radio saturation, but I do not want to. So what I'm going to say here is, remember the number one and remember the number eight right now. What we're talking about here is not the saturation in an hour of 14 minutes or 10 minutes and this and that. I could pull numbers like that all day long. I believe they're accurate. They're great. But what does that really mean to the officers there on the street? Absolutely nothing. Because what matters is the peak times. Once again, the numbers one and eight. One. That's how many are on our channel. Our officers do not have to fight to get on the air during the peak times. The dispatcher is always there to answer. WCC, there'll be eight plus another one to make nine of us on that radio frequency during peak hours. My fear is a chief. Is my officer pulls a traffic stop. And I got to tell you, this is hard. And it's hard to sleep at night thinking about this. They pull a traffic stop and they can't get on the air to call in their traffic stop. And they're waiting. And they're waiting. Imagine yourself in the car now that's up in front, that I pulled you over for speeding. You may not know you were speeding, okay? But here's the deal. You're sitting up there and the officer isn't getting out of his car and walking up there. You start getting agitated. Well, why isn't he coming up here? The officer is getting agitated because he can't get on the air to call in the traffic stop. Finally, what does the officer do? Gets out of his car and starts approaching because he knows you're getting agitated. And he knows the longer he sits there, the more likely it is you're going to open your car door and get out and start coming back to him, which is, in law enforcement, one of the worst things that can happen. Creates confrontation immediately. And this day and age, believe me, we are trying to de-escalate like you can't believe. So that's my fear. That officer gets out of that car. Dispatch doesn't know where he is. Now something happens. He didn't call out. And why didn't he call out? Because he couldn't get on the air because of the peak time when it was too crowded. I'm not saying that's going to happen all the time. That's not going to be the case on third shift. Let's face it. Third shift, there's less activity, okay? They're probably going to wake people up by calling out with a traffic stop from other departments. But this is the reality. And I want to put this forward because this is me. This is the chief. And these are things that I worry about. Cost. I haven't heard any questions about cost at this time. I don't know if I will tonight. I don't think the cost of keeping our dispatch center is significant, but we can debate that. I can go through on parts where the study didn't include certain things that need to be added for costs. And we can go through that if I have those questions later. But when you plan on four clerical to run a 24/7, you can't do it. You need five. You need part-time. They're counting our administrative assistant back into a clerical. And I can tell you that the administrative assistant needs to be an administrative assistant. There's a lot of duties that the administrative assistant does that has nothing to do with clerical. So when they say we're saving a position, we're not. We will if this council says I only get four, but it'll be a reduction in service from what we have for our community. I started with keeping our community safe for everyone in the city. I take it very seriously and I take this issue to heart. If I truly thought it was best for our community to go to WCC, I would stand here and tell you that. And if I didn't, it'd be irresponsible of me as the chief of police. I could tell you, I stand with our dispatch center being local. That's all I have. Thank you.
Let's, as we did before, let's go ahead and ask a few questions and then we'll kind of open it up for broad range questions from both options. Do you have any questions for Chief Fister? Alderman Ellis.
Yes, thank you very much for the information which you shared. I appreciate it. You had mentioned the ESI net. Can you further expound upon that? When is it going to happen? Because my whole question has always been, and I wrote it down here too, why is it that WCC is getting all the cell calls? And why are we not being able to acquire those?
Sure. And if you remember from the prior conversations, they all go, once there's a county dispatch developed, the state law says that that's where the 911 cells will go. Okay? That was determined long ago. If you want to know the history on it, I can tell you, but I'm not going to go into it, okay? But that was determined back then. When we've asked for them, it's been, it'll slow down service for surrounding agencies like I stated. ESI is being implemented, starting implementation in 2022. Okay? How long is that going to take? I don't know, you know? But they're starting in 2022. And we're finally getting a wish that we've asked for for a long time. One of the great other things that happens with it that I didn't mention as well is when a PSAP is overloaded with 911 calls, it will automatically start sending those over to an adjacent PSAP. Yeah. So if our PSAP is overloaded with 911 calls, they're automatically going to roll over to WCC. Just like if WCC is overloaded, they're going to roll over to Milwaukee, who's their backup. But this is the new technology. This is what we've been waiting for. This is what we've been looking for for years and it's finally coming.
Alderman Douglas.
Going with that ESI net, you talked about if OPD was oversaturated with 911 calls. So is that specific to your 911 lines? How many lines do you have that would cause it to overload and go to WCC?
I'm looking at the captain right now. We have three. We have three 911 dedicated 911 lines into our dispatch center.
Okay. So like a major incident, if you have four people, one's going to be sent to the county anyways? Or is that rolled to a non-emergency number?
Currently, and I want to get this right, so bear with me here on it. I believe, right now, that rolls over to, I believe we have three non-emergency 911 lines that are in there that are used for alarm centers to call us on. So I do believe it can roll over to those three lines at that point.
Okay.
Alderman Kavieski.
The technology that you mentioned that utilizes the position of the individual on the cellphone and if for some reason the county or the city were able to get those cell-initiated 911 calls, that doesn't provide the technology to determine what that call or the nature of the call is, right? So if somebody calls for EMS or fire using a cellphone and it goes to local dispatch, that would then need to be processed and transferred to WCC for response, right? Because local dispatch doesn't have the ability to dispatch those services.
That is true. Now, are you saying this is a life-threatening nature or are you just saying any AMBO call?
Well, I'm saying if I were on Highway P and I was walking and the person I was with had a heart attack.
Sure.
And I called 911.
Yep.
And it went to local dispatch.
Yep.
It would have to go through, process that local dispatch and then go to WCC for EMS to roll to take care of it.
That's correct. But the great news is, we're going to get there first. And my officers know how to save lives. Because the most important thing is chest compressions. Okay? And I'm going to beat them there. And you know what? Even if that call goes into WCC, I can still beat them there with that technology.
So follow up. And again, the training associated with being a police officer is, and the services that you provide are absolutely outstanding, but I don't know if you would equate that training to the level of EMS and their ability to respond to life-threatening situations that may occur, whether it's that heart attack or any other bodily injury or harm that might have been the reason for the call, right?
Sure. I will not put my guys up against the EMS guys. They know more, absolutely. But understand what is critical in that timeframe. That timeframe is not critical, you know? It's not like, oh my gosh, we got to get an IV, we got to deliver drugs, we got to do this. That's all important stuff. But what's the most important? Getting that first compression on somebody who's having a heart attack. And once that starts, you're now trying, you're saving that person's life. You're making an attempt to do that. And the faster we can get somebody there to do that, the better. And that's what I'm saying we can do. Okay? Don't get me wrong. They're going to do outstanding things when they get there. When they get there, we're going to turn it over to them. Because we're like, you guys are the professionals. Do your thing, okay? And believe me, they're going to get the credit for saving a life and that's fine because they deserve it. So, you know, for what they do. So, you know, the most important, and that's where I'm trying to get this. I totally get transfers, this, that, and everything else. But really, it's hands-on a patient. Somebody who's down and doing hands-on, okay? Because otherwise, we wouldn't, WCC and us wouldn't even be doing EMDs. We're telling people how to do CPR, right? Because we know that's the best thing for somebody who's a pulseless non-breather. That is what we need to do. That's my response.
Alderman Rozak.
Thanks, chief, for coming up tonight. I know this has, you know, been a very interesting discussion. It's taken us down a lot of different roads. You wrote an article about, and I think you're still advocating today to get the 911 cell calls, right?
Correct.
So what you're advocating for is actually consolidated dispatch, but just under our roof, correct?
No.
Well, you're going to try to take more of the calls, including Western Lakes calls.
That's not consolidated dispatch.
But you're trying to consolidate more dispatch services under your roof. Wouldn't you agree?
No, I don't agree with that.
So let's game out this next-gen issue or you getting the cellphone calls, which would necessitate another delay going the opposite way, right? If you're taking those calls from the cell, whether it's next-gen or current cell, and a Western Lakes call comes in, you would have to get that call, do the basic information and then transmit that call to Western Lakes. Isn't that correct?
That is. But once again, I want you to differentiate between a life-threatening emergency and a regular AMBO call.
Right. But the NINA standards say you treat every 911 call as if it's life-threatening until you know otherwise, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
But you know that within the first seconds.
So let's talk about transfer delays. You're comfortable with having transfer delays going back to Western Lakes, but are you comfortable having transfer delays to your officers?
If WCC follows the protocols that are in place, I am comfortable with that.
I've looked at the protocol. The protocol for the transfers are three pages long. Have you seen those protocols?
Yes, I did, sir.
And those protocols are because some of the calls come to WCC and our landline calls come here, correct?
Correct.
Okay. As far as the transfer delay you're comfortable with, can you tell me how long of a transfer delay you're comfortable with as you stand here today?
I would have to have specific incidents and what we're talking about, like I'm saying, between life-threatening and, you know, a kid that's got their finger stuck in a jungle gym.
But when a 911 call comes in, chief, it's treated as life-threatening until you know otherwise. And I guess the question is, we know that we have an institutional delay. We don't know the exact amount of the delay because we only have records and data from when the calls come into both PSAPs. So we don't exactly know how long those delays, and those delays change per call. I'm asking you, as you stand here today, how long of a delay are you comfortable with?
And with all due respect to Alderman Rozak, it depends on the call of service. It really does. I can't, you know, if you want me to say a minute, you know, I'm comfortable with a minute, that would be ridiculous.
No, I don't want you to.
So I mean, you know, I think that brings up a good point. And I don't think this is any fault of Matrix either, but I do believe that the study should have went further into that. Because I would have loved to have seen the study say, what is that? What is that true delay? That information was available in the data that we gave them. But I understand that wasn't in the RFP and I don't blame Matrix for that either. But it's just something else that I think we could have obtained.
Well, they actually did address some of the delay that's on page 22 of the study. But let me ask you another question. You talked about some of the services here in the city. The study said four full-time additional clerks plus 1,560 hours of part-time hours as well. Do you understand that if we were to adopt the study tonight and the recommendations of the study would be four full-time clerks and that 1,500, almost 1,600 of part-time? Is that, do you understand that there's the part-time element there too?
Yes, I acknowledge that there was part-time.
Oh, okay. I thought you said you needed extra part-time because the study says there's part-time.
No, 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 no. What I'm saying is, what they're doing is really five clerks when I talk to them. They're adding four clerical positions. They're changing, well, not adding, they're changing the dispatch to four clerical positions.
Right, and the part-time.
So we're saying, right, and part-time. So right now, I got five full-time dispatchers. That's what it takes to run a 24/7. The math is there, okay? It takes five. So in order for them to get to the number five, what they're doing is taking our current administrative assistant position and saying that's going to be a clerical position now as well. Okay? Which is, we're not going to be able to function if that happens. So what I'm saying is, the number needs to be five and part-time.
Okay. So you would say if we wanted to keep that full in-house clerical staff, you really need one more in addition to the four?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you, chief.
Sure.
Thank you.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Thanks, chief, for all your information. My daughter lives in Menominee Falls, village of Menominee Falls, and she's very engaged in the community up there. So it's come to my attention that Menominee Falls and also Butler, since the study, have also gone to WCC. Menominee Falls for some woeful financial situation that they got themselves into. My question is, they also had to hire a full-time IT person, but I haven't heard you mention that. Is that, would that be a possibility or reality for us as well besides the clerks?
Yeah, I mean, that's another one, like I said, I was going to get into all the costs, but if we go there, we will have, our current IT is not going to be able to support what we're going to need. So we're going to need either a full-time or a three-quarter time dedicated IT person for our police department. There's no doubt about it, just from evaluating what the Falls has and other departments as well. So that would be something else that we would have to look at.
Alderman Douglas.
No fault to your own. You guys are in a staffing crisis as well, right? You guys are down to, what, two full-time and then one LTE person out of your five?
Correct.
So no fault to your own, people leaving because of all what's going on here.
Correct.
I mean, how do you see, if it stays local, how do you address your staffing issues currently? Are you planning on putting a cop in there? Are we doing overtime? How are we addressing? How are we addressing that staffing issue and the local dispatch? Should we stay local?
If we stay local, I have, right now, all of our hours covered between what I have and part-timers that have stepped up. And, and if I got the opportunity, I'm gonna do a shout-out to them. Because really, we've asked them to step up and take a lot of hours, and our part-timers have really stepped up to do that, you know, to do it. We continue that, but we'll start a new hiring process, okay? I think we have a quality dispatch center that I think we can get dispatchers from, yeah, we'll say it, stealing from other agencies. Hopefully not yours, right? So, no offense. But, you know, we'll go out there and we'll, we'll, we'll look for people. If we don't have that, we'll go out there and, and find the people that are qualified and, and train them as well from day one.
So, we've, we've, to kind of summarize where we are, we've, both WCC and OPD have had about 30 minutes to share their story, as well as get some initial questions out. So, I'd like to do is have both of you gentlemen stand up there, if you don't mind, and open it up to the council to ask whatever you would like. And so, it's, this could last five minutes or five hours, I'm not sure.
I would just ask whoever's speaking to make sure the mic is directed to you. Thank you.
Well, good, good question, just a question. Do you guys want a five-minute break first?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So, we're gonna adjourn for about five minutes and then come back. So, we'll start at, we'll start in about five minutes. Thank you all.
No, I appreciate what you say. That's why I'm here. That's not what we're doing.
I wanted to go, I was going to go two minutes, five? And that way he has the chance.
We're good.
My wife makes fun of me all the time when my kids.
I don't have any little kids to blame it on, but I still buy the big box.
It's, I just wanted, I just wanted something to have.
Plenty to chew on tonight.
I know. Yeah, right?
Yeah, we spent a lot of time trying to rework this for no reason.
Yeah, yeah, sure. But that's their choice.
You know, it's not, it's not, yeah, not perfect. But you know, it's gonna happen in two years. We already know this line here, that's all gonna be, one will be all up here. And in fact, we might even have to take more. That'll all be two. And then, you know, we'll, well, you know, but it's like, this, this will no longer be one.
Deal with them, do two normal for it.
Yeah, this is, this line here, because they're expecting at least 1,300. About 200 here. Well, and we're looking at, oh, wait, metal, metal. It's not that much, it's small, right? But that's what we're figuring all together, about some potentials, about 200. So, the only way this can grow is either down.
You and I are not.
No problem, no problem.
I'm not.
I'm a lot older than you.
I'm, I'm working this, that, and that. Yeah, well, I'm not doing that. But, you know.
Absolutely.
I couldn't read the eye movement if I needed to go out and.
I kept all the split ballots in Ward 11, wait, 11 or 12. One of them, because I, yeah, in Ward 12, because I use the river here to cut it off, so I didn't have split ballots.
You have a clear responsibility to who you are and what you do. And you do it, and you need to, I didn't take it as brutal as, but what I think you need, yeah. That would be.
I don't disagree with that.
Yes, sir.
What you have to do is, yeah. We can sit down.
I block out my whole day tomorrow.
Boy.
If you're asked to do anything, you have to do, just be as professional as possible.
Absolutely. I'm gonna be. We generally don't.
Don't, okay. Because now you're gonna be my.
Yeah. We, we, we generally don't for legal reasons.
Yeah, okay. This is already pre-set up because also for me. Oh.
I try and, I try to be consistent.
Hold on, I gotta write something down.
We do afterwards, because then the, the legal issue of all of that goes away. So, you'll see that afterwards.
I, that's, that's troublesome.
It is troublesome.
She's like looking around. Oh, my God. So, wow, I, I've, I've known a couple of people. None of them have the same, you know, smell, taste.
How are you? Good.
I told my wife, if I got COVID and I could, I'd have to just be on COVID, I would just jump on Fortnite and I would play that fucking non-stop. I would just play like 13 hours a day and just dummy people.
I just basically slept.
I can't sleep when I'm sick though. I always try to sleep and I feel, I don't know what it is, I'm just so restless whenever I get sick.
By what?
Buzzy, just restless.
Yeah, we were sharing.
Days, yeah, yeah.
Everything was sitting over in France. And then they came in and they.
A little disappointed by they just said water tower. By the way, that rendered on the water towers. Our, our logo, it looks great, once you get the quick trip. But we should have thought about when you're back at Pabst Farm. Bigger, like we should have, it looks, it looks like that, which is great, but that doesn't render really well on a bright sunny day for, to scale. That's the way to put it. Like, we should have kept the.
We can all come back, we'll get started.
So, if we do another one, we should think about having a designer. I don't know why I just thought of it. Because they said water tower. I love the way it looks. It's like, kind of, did you vote for it in the Water Tower Olympics?
I did. I, I threw it out there to try to, because Dumpy didn't know about it or put it out there until like, within a few hours of it closing.
Head, let's, let's reconvene. And back where we are, thank you, everyone, for taking a little break. As we all know, this topic is incredibly important, and we want to make sure that our council here has every point of view and also has every opportunity to ask questions from both WCC and the OPD. So, we're gonna start off with Alderman Rozak. Excuse me, Alderman Kowieski, I looked right at you. I'm sorry, Lou, sorry about that.
Remember the better-looking district?
So, I'm just gonna start with, with a bit of a statement and, and address a question that I got from somebody in the, in the audience. Tonight dispatch is, is obviously the focus of our agenda. But we must not lose focus on the larger picture of it overall, which is public safety. Dispatch is a communication frontline between our community and the first responders during a time of need and potentially life-threatening events for the caller and others that are involved. The council has a track record of supporting public safety in all aspects in the best interests of the community. We have spent money on infrastructure, equipment, and personnel to ensure a world-class service for our citizens, our guests, and those that serve. As our community and those communities around us have grown, we have united to address world-class service for fire and EMS with the creation of Western Lakes Fire District. Western Lakes Fire District, from its inception, has provided life and property-saving services in a time-sensitive, professional manner, and introduced WCC to our community as it provides for dispatch services as part of our expectations. Both have done an incredible job and have worked through the challenges of evolving and growing together, just like this council and just like this community. Our police department has also evolved, seeing new leadership in Chief Fister, a new public safety building, growing staff as we add officers, body cameras, and equipment to remain focused on world-class public safety services to our citizens, our guests, and those who serve. They and our community have been served well by local dispatch, providing the lifeline of communication during times of need. I would offer to you, on council and our community, that the time to evolve has come again in order to remain focused on public safety and unifying the lines of communication between all of our public safety departments. Separated or segmented lines of communication do not provide efficient and seamless communication between the departments and communities' needs. There, there's been a lot of change over the past few years. There have been changes that are, are coming. Now is a time for the policy to evolve. Some on council wanted to take a look at this in three years. We wait for three years to, to address this, it, it will provide additional challenges then. Had mentioned that you're gonna look to recruit people to, to staff current staffing needs. I would imagine you're not gonna look for those staffing needs to be met for three years. And I, I would think those who would look to fill those positions would want more than three years of that position in their, in their forecast. The decision here tonight isn't whether we support the police department or you as chief. I support you as our chief. I support Western Lakes Fire District, and I support Waukesha County Communications as our public safety providers. And it's truly, I look at public safety as all of you together. Because that is what we rely on in those times of need. Whether it's fire, whether it's being pulled over or somebody trying to break into our house, or whether I have a heart attack. Those, those needs and the line of communication that the dispatchers provide. And, and again, I've never said anything disparaging to, to or about our dispatchers. They do a great job. But a unified line of communication between all of our departments, I think, is, is extremely valuable. And our surrounding communities as well. The, the question was asked of me why I haven't responded to some of the emails that have come over with questions thus far. I try, in topics like this, to, to wait until this discussion has occurred. I take all of those emails and I, I gather that information, and it does weigh in, in how I look at things and, and potentially how I vote. And I would tell you that as an alderman, that's, that takes my job very seriously as well, for the public safety of the overall community as well as my district, that, as you know, when the initial information came out to this council a few years ago, I was in favor of local dispatch. It's the information that has been provided over that period of time between then and now that has led me to believe that, that integrated consolidated communication line between our departments is the right path to take. And I will reply to emails and I will reply and sit down with anybody to, to go through my thought process and, and those questions, for sure. But I, I just wanted to make, make you aware that, because there, there have been several emails that have come in over the last several days on this particular topic. And I think everybody on this council, always anybody that, that has an email or question, whether it's an email or, or phone or in person, the justification for how we vote. So, I will, I will do that for sure. But I just think it's, it's important. Generally, I don't have anything that I, I put together and I try to talk as, as things are presented. But I, I wanted to get my thoughts out in this format. You and I have, have known each other for, for a long time. I respect you. I respect what you do and, and what you believe in and what you bring to this community in keeping it safe. And it's not about questioning that role as, as it applies to public safety and police department. I'm looking at this from an overall public safety standpoint, inclusive of our fire and EMS and that unified line of communication. So, I, I, I feel that I owe you that as well, so.
Alderman Ellis. This issue with dispatch needs to finally be put to bed. And tonight, we have the ability to make that happen. First thing I'd like to do is, you guys go ahead and take a seat, please. I'd appreciate it. Thank you. Five years ago, some of us sat at this place and told everyone that we would not revisit this issue for five years because of the contracts we had to get ourselves into that we could not break. Here we are, not even two or three years later, and we're still talking about the same thing. So, here are my thoughts on the subject. We decided as a council to get a third-party individual to take a look at the numbers, to see if it was economical to switch over to WCC. The argument there was that this, by saving money, we could put more police on the street and ultimately save the taxpayers dollars every year. The argument was in reference to response time and the fact that, as it stands now, every cell call goes to WCC before it comes to Oconomawak. And the quicker response time means potential saving of lives. And, well, isn't that the most important thing? We have heard from both Brad and Fister, and both make great points in what they feel comfortable with and what seems to work for them. Brad likes WCC because the fact that he is in several districts, I think it was 11, if I'm correct. And rightfully so, fire belongs there. Fister feels confident in dispatch because of the familiarity of the area with the people who run it. And isn't it really about safety of community? We then heard from Matrix, and I felt their presentation was very informative. To summarize what I heard was the following. Both WCC and Oconomawak are having some staffing issues. Both have above ratings for response time, but both have a great training program. So, Oconomawak has a great support staff. Oconomawak dispatch takes pride in their local knowledge of its staff and personal connections between dispatch and officers and the community. Oconomawak can operate separately from WCC and has in the past, but collectively works well when receiving cells, cell calls. They also discussed the cost associated with the potential moving. In the first year, we would spend an additional $118,573 to move over to WCC. In the second year, we save $103,025. And in the third year, we would save an additional $112,761. Now, I'm not gonna take into consideration years 10 and 20 because those numbers are estimates, and they even said, they made those numbers up using certain assumptions. So, here is where I stand. As far as the ability for Oconomawak to handle its own calls, no doubt they can. They have in the past and can in the future. As far as the information that we receive from Brad and Fister, where the common thread is, the safety of community, that is where the common thread stops. Fire has 11 districts, and they have to be monitored and stayed on top of. Oconomowoc can't do that. I don't expect Oconomowoc to. Oconomowoc is one city. The department's contract radio council maintenance and 911 phone service will not expire until 2024, meaning that the full cost savings associated with switching to WCC could not be realized until then. This tells me that our costs still need to be paid, for even if our decision is made, we still have to pay those costs. The Center of Technology's assets are still in their useful life and will not require capital expenditure for replacement until the second half of the decade. And just so you know, that all came from the Matrix report. That all came from them. Matrix stated that there would be no officer-safety impact whether we go to WCC or stay where we are currently. Now for the numbers. After looking at the numbers over three years, we will save $203,929, totaling $67,976 per year. This is not enough to staff an additional police officer. The only way we could save money is by, and I'm quoting Matrix again, "the elimination of maintenance of capital expenditure necessary to replace emergency equipment" as its useful life expires in the second half of the decade. And also, dispatch positions should be eliminated and replaced by hiring four additional full-time police clerks and sufficient part-time clerks to staff police headquarters on a 24/7 basis. Now let me go ahead and put that in Ellis legalese here. They want us to fire dispatch workers, and that's the only way we're gonna really be able to save some money. I'm not willing to do that. The only thing...
Please, if you can keep your clapping to a minimum, he's, thank you.
The only thing a man has his word is his word. And without that, we have nothing. I told people that I would not look at this issue for five years, and I'm gonna keep my word. If a man's word cannot be trusted, he himself cannot be trusted. I don't ever want to be known as a man who lied or spoke out of both sides of my mouth. But a man of his word with impeccable integrity and can be trusted with each word that comes out of my mouth. We were put in these seats because our constituents felt as though they could trust us. That we showed integrity, that we put our community first, and I want to keep it that way. Now, there's a bigger problem. Some of you have muddled the waters enough that people don't feel secure with working in Oconomowoc Dispatch. And for that, I say, shame on you. Some of you have never been fired or worked in a job where every day could be your last. And trust me, no one wants to live that way. We have put an element of doubt in the employees' minds so that if a good opportunity comes up, they might just entertain the thought and maybe even jump ship. They should not have to live that way, and it saddens my heart to know that this is happening. Some have argued that this is a dollar and cent thing. Well, look at the numbers. The savings is not there. Some have stated that this is a safety thing. Well, even Matrix said, whether we stay where we are or we go to WCC, safety will not be compromised. So now, what's the argument? Let's just do the right thing and keep everything where it is, and revisit this as we stated to them two years ago. Once those contracts run out, regardless of what we do, we still have to pay for those contracts. They're not going away. There's something else I want to bring up. And I'm just gonna put it out there, and then I'm gonna keep my mouth shut after that. Lou, you did something that I want to really commend you for. This was, oh, a while back. If you recall, we had the Petal Tavern, and we had to make a decision on what we were gonna do with the Petal Tavern. Were we gonna keep it? Were we not gonna? What were we gonna do? What the case was? You, at that point in time, had a vested interest in the Petal Tavern. And you took the high road. You said, "I am not gonna cast a vote on this because I have a financial interest in it." And I respect the heck out of you for doing that. It's my understanding that we do have an individual who has a vested interest in us going over to WCC. Now, I cannot tell them not to vote, but I do respect. This is an issue that I feel as though I'm requesting that you do step down, just for this vote. If you vote, I respect you. If you don't vote, I respect you. But that's just my ask.
Can I respond to that?
Yes, go ahead.
So, to be full disclosure, yes, my wife works for WCC. She started in 2010. She's a part-time dispatcher. She has a job today, she'll have a job tomorrow. Not losing her job whether we go to Oconomowoc or not. There is zero financial gain for me or my wife regarding me voting. It got brought up. I talked to the city attorney, looking at statute 19.85. There is zero conflict of interest for me to vote. And to be upfront and honest with you, I intend to fully vote tonight. Simple as that. I mean, I'm a law enforcement officer. I've used WCC for half of my career, on the busiest channel of Area 4, for seven years. I currently work for a department that has its own local dispatch. It's a conflicted issue for me, absolutely. I see benefits to both sides. I think being in this realm, I'm one of the most probably educated people on this council to make this decision. I use them every day. I talk with my wife about it every day, what she goes through. I think I'm one of the people that has the best knowledge of this issue, respectfully.
Alderman Mulder.
This is, you know, 18 months on the job here, definitely the most attention I've paid to any issue. Probably, I think we all have 20, 30, 40 hours in the last month in this, so, you know, I feel like I really did my homework, and I want people to know that. And it's confusing, it's a lot to learn, right? And so, as I was trying to kind of boil this down in my mind and reframe it so that I could make the right decision, I actually think we've been asking ourselves the wrong question. The question is not, should we keep Oconomowoc Dispatch? The question is, how do we want to dispatch emergency services in Oconomowoc? Do we want to do it through two different services, or do we want to do it as a unified service? And I, from there, I said, if I was starting a city new, would I ever set up a system where I had two different dispatches, one for police, one for fire EMT, and put them on different computer systems, and make it difficult to provide mutual aid to, not difficult, I shouldn't say that, not make it seamless to provide mutual aid back and forth with the communities surrounding us? And we are now on an island out here in Oconomowoc. Pulling in 911 would put us even on a bigger island or a more defined island. And as I tried to process that, I talked to both the chiefs, I went to both dispatch centers, talked to many other people, both within the department, other departments served by WCC, other EMTs from outside of the area. And all of the discussions I had with the people related to Oconomowoc or WCC, everybody wanted to talk about the delays, and they wanted to talk about how the other people were causing them delays. Everybody had examples, six minutes here, a minute there. This happened, it couldn't, might not have happened. Tonight, there were delays about whether or not there'd be a delay if there was a shooting at the school or something. What would the delay be there? What about at the beach? Everybody's talking about delays. And we don't have any hard numbers on that. But logic tells me if we have one single dispatch center, delays are going to be less frequent. The numbers that are out there is a fire doubles in every 30 seconds. Someone in cardiac arrest, their chance of living goes down by 10% every minute. Those are at the margin, right? I mean, those calls come in, a structure fire is, you know, a few times a year. Cardiac arrest is a few times a year. Many people might, in the force, might not even deal with those on an annual basis. But unlike the parking structure, where we weren't gonna build a parking structure for Easter Sunday, we have to be prepared for those margin activities. When lives are on the line, that's when, and the only time, a lot of times, that the call transfer is going to be a problem. And I totally appreciate that the police will be there doing chest compressions and, you know, performing valuable lifesaving measures, and that the ambulance will get there soon after. But the margin for those people in cardiac arrest is very, very thin already. I learned today that if you're in full cardiac arrest, there's a 10% chance you're coming back at all. And then put a delay in there, and you might as well forget it. The delays we talked about tonight, in terms of schools and in terms of beaches, you know, those are also at the margins, right? Those are gonna be infrequent, that we're going to have a call to send where something's happening at the school, it's being noticed on a monitor by one of the clerks or even by one of the dispatchers. They're not fully monitored right now. Nobody's staring at those four TVs in the dispatch center 24/7. I'm starting to ramble. I didn't write this all down, I apologize. But it really comes down to, I just can't get past the thought and the logic that a single dispatch is going to be more efficient and is going to delay, is remove all the delays that were pointed out to me by various people that were, you know, endemic within the system. This is very difficult, and I won't say that I don't have concerns about going to WCC. I think the patch is serious. I think we need to, if we can't get rid of that, then that's, we need to consider that. I think that, you know, that turnover there is a challenge. Pay, whether you're at Oconomowoc or you're at WCC, is a challenge. We're underpaying, just like we are with our fire and rescue. We're underpaying these people. $6 an hour more to go to Racine County, $15 an hour more to go to the private sector to dispatch when there's a power outage at We Energies. That is unacceptable. We need to do better than that as a city and as a county. We need to pay these people like they're deserved to be paid, which is above a minimum wage of $22 roughly, starting wage. That's work that we have to do with the county and do internally if we end up keeping dispatch. So there's a lot of things that need our attention. But I think framing the question a little bit differently about not, do we want dispatch local or do we not want dispatch local? But how do we want our dispatch done in the first place? And are we doing it the best way? And I just unfortunately don't think a two-party system here is the best way to be doing it.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Chief Fister, could you speak to those doubts and concerns again, please?
Well, I wasn't writing them all down, so. It's hard. I get it. It is. You talk about delays. I guess, and this is just my thoughts here, okay?
Feel free. I won't be offended. Talk away.
Right. You say that a heart attack matters, and it does. You know, but I'm still gonna tell you that if we get somebody there, the quicker we get somebody there, the higher the chances are. 10% is there, okay? I feel that the system we have in place does that, for a large number of those calls. And I don't want, I think there's a little bit of dismissing on the school in that situation there, okay? Because in one sense, you're saying there's a delay for lifesaving a one individual person. I'm telling you, there's gonna be a delay if we have an active assailant shooting at our school, if we go to WCC, compared to what we can provide now. And it's more than one life at stake. And if we go to WCC, what we're gonna have is some great witnesses. They're called clerical. They're gonna be watching on a screen. And I'm sorry, I'm gonna get a little harsh here, but they're gonna see kids getting massacred. And trying to get that information to our officers as best they can of where that shooter is. That's the key. An active assailant, it's about where's the shooter and get there, if it's one person. So I get your point. I understand where you're coming from. I just wanted to, you know, make you think of that, too, so.
Fair.
Okay?
Alderman Zappel.
I agree with Alderman Mulder. We've been wrestling with this question since we've been elected to the council. If we should keep dispatch in Oconomowoc, should we move it to WCC? Chief Fister's passionate plea for keeping dispatch in Oconomowoc when a majority of the other Waukesha County municipalities choose to utilize the county services. I've heard the study is flawed and inadequate. The consulting group only spent a day and a half at the Oconomowoc Dispatch and a day at WCC. How can a study that is conducted by an out-of-state company that does not know our community carries so much weight? I've heard objections to regionalization have always been about putting the needs of a community we serve first. I've heard we do not believe in our community, that our community will achieve better services by joining a regional center with communities which Oconomowoc has minimal connections to. The Oconomowoc Dispatch performs services and take calls for residents. Their faceless outside dispatchers are simply not equipped to answer. Only when Oconomowoc folks call 911 from a land-based line or contact an on-emergency number from a cellphone, they reach the dispatch center. When they call 911 on a cellphone, as most folks do, they're calling WCC. Heck, I accidentally called 911 on Sunday out at Summer Fields. These iPhones are pain in the rear end. I spoke with dispatch for a good five minutes. They thanked me for my time and said, "Have a good day," before they had an officer en route that I saw driving by the ball fields while I was out there. Oconomowoc usually has one dispatch working at a time. WCC has multiple dispatchers working simultaneously, which means that when a dispatcher receives a call, others theoretically immediately can be contacting emergency services to respond, a major plus for emergency responders. I've heard numerous talks at council meetings of a referendum, more town halls, creation of ad hoc advisory committee. It's simply the council kicking the can down the road, providing little further insight and no political cover from the public. I reviewed the independent study, yes, I said independent study multiple times, that I asked for here on council, because that helps me make decisions when I have an outside body making the decisions. I've read the emails. I've responded to the emails. I've received calls. I've responded to the calls. Fortunately, I was unable to respond to the call that I received at 7:02 tonight. I apologize. Spoke with residents out in the community who are both in favor of keeping dispatch in Oconomowoc and those who are in favor of going to WCC. I've done my due diligence, and I'm ready to embrace a dispatch transfer that is frankly long overdue.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Thank you. I've learned a lot these past three years as an alderman. I've learned more about the dynamics of law enforcement and the related dispatch relationship than I ever thought I'd need to know. But because of it, I've come to appreciate our officers and our dispatchers even more, and the relationship that they have, and the benefit to our community that can never be duplicated at WCC. I want to thank so many people who have shown their strong support for our police department and dispatchers. All the people who have spoken here tonight and at many past meetings. and dispatchers, all the people who have spoken here tonight and at many past meetings. I want to thank all the people who have sent emails or made phone calls. I want to also thank two former mayors, two former city administrators, several past aldermen and retired Oconomock police officers, all who have reached out to me with their support and many, many other citizens too numerous to mention. And why do I mention all of these people? Because these are the people that we represent, these are the people who elected us into office to speak for them. You'd have to be living under a rock in Oconomock right now to not feel the overwhelming sentiment to keep our dispatch local. And our constituents are informed and engaged, they understand both sides of the issue and you could tell that tonight by many of their comments. What, what a testament that is to our chief of police, our captain, our officers and our dispatchers who are tasked and trusted to keep our community safe. In the end, this discussion came down to two key points, cost and possible delays in transfer. We know that cost isn't an issue and I am confident in the explanations that Chief Fister gave as far as the, the delays and how we handle those and also the percentage of calls that the Matrix study talked about that are received within 60 seconds or dispatched out within, within 60 seconds, both WCC and Oconomock PD. And just a little something that if anyone wants to know how to even avoid a delay, in my phone, instead of 911, I have OconPD 262-567-4401. And if you push that, you go right to our dispatch, you bypass WCC. And I know a lot of people in this community know that that is also a great tool. The argument to transfer to WCC at this time would have to be really compelling to me. Even Matrix, in their opinion, says that a change is not urgent. Translation, our community is safe. We lose so much more than we gain by going to WCC. What do we lose? We lose real-time live monitoring of our schools, the courts and our beaches and the ability to act on that. That delays safety. The familiarity that our dispatchers have for our community, in the Matrix study, they said that five out of the 12 agencies onboard at WCC at the time of the study have issues with that. That's another delay. I could give you examples that other communities have given me where they were sent to the wrong address, that's a delay. That's a safety issue. We also lose all the ancillary services that Matrix lists that I won't hear. We lose the camaraderie and relationships between our dispatchers and our police. Our force has a tough enough job to do. Our local dispatchers keep our force informed and connected and also safe so they can get home to their families at night. We also lose control of our dispatch if we go to WCC. We will be subject to any and all new policies and procedures and probably price hikes with very little or no input. If we don't have full control, we lose control of our destiny here in Oconomock. If you believe that we need to go to WCC, then you would have to believe that our chief of police, who is sworn to uphold the safety of our community, is not being truthful with us. That's a vote of no confidence in his ability. He has nearly three decades of experience and yet we sit here, we sit here in the judgment seats. If you believe that we need to go to WCC, you would have to also believe that the city of Waukesha, who dispatches for their police and fire, is not a safe community, nor would Meskego, Maguano or Elm Grove be. And remember that all of the communities that went to WCC eventually went because of cost factors, not safety factors. I've talked to them all over the last two-plus years and if anybody wants my notes on that, I'd be glad to get them to you. Most have adapted in some way, but most will tell you that they wish they still had the local dispatch and all of those other services that their local dispatch offered. At a time when many communities are defunding their police, we have an opportunity to show our police how much we appreciate them and what they do by continuing to provide them with local dispatch, a tool that they're asking for to keep our citizens safer. In Austin, Texas, I don't know if you guys have heard, but they cut their police budget by one-third, laid off 150 officers and their police response times now average nine minutes. We've, we've received a bunch of letters from our police officers, one consolidated letter, 21 full-time officers signed, one wonderful letter by Sergeant Hogan and another one by Josh Mosher, and I just want to tell them thank you for that. I've been in the trenches fighting this fight for our citizens and for our force for over two years now. We voted to build a new public safety building and to build the infrastructure for our dispatch and then invested in custom high-tech equipment. Most staff, officers included, made decisions to stay with us based on that vote and our word that we would be keeping dispatch through that upgrade. It seems so disingenuous to try to make an argument now that we have to move for public safety reasons. Again, there's no hugely compelling reasons why I would vote to go to WCC. We've talked about some of them, but in the big picture, there were no examples that proved hugely compelling and adversary to our daily safety here in Oconomock. I know this whole subject has gotten political all the way around, but I'm asking all of you to do what's right for our citizens and for our officers. WCC could do a good job, but we can do it better here in Oconomock. Our citizens deserve that and our officers deserve that. Thank you.
Alder, Alderman, Alderman Rozek.
Turn that on, it's been a while. I actually really, out of the comments so far, I think Alderman Mulder's comments about how do we want to dispatch 911 in our city is really pretty much spot-on. It's the discussion that we had a couple of years ago when we first kind of started this debate and, and that continues. One of the questions that was out there was what has changed since 2019 when we had the vote? It's not been five or six or seven or eight discussions, there's really only been one big one. And then there was a discussion a year ago to, to, to do the early buy-in so we'd save money if we ever do go over. So a couple of things have changed. One, since right around the time that first debate occurred, the town left. And the town left to WCC after having been at WCC, came to our dispatch and then went back to WCC. We had a fair and impartial study. We have new council, we have a new mayor and we have new administrative staff. And we have what I believe is a refocus on all of public safety in a holistic manner, which doesn't mean just police, but also fire. And that's important for me. One of my main points and what I've looked at, and for anyone that's curious, I've got a lot of notes too and I've talked to a lot of people, I, I've talked to dozens, I've received probably over a dozen different emails on this topic, both pro and against. And what typically comes out when I talk to someone that's pro-local dispatch, I, I tell them, do you know that if you call 911 from your cell phone, you're not getting local dispatch? A lot of people don't understand that. And I would, I would venture that I don't think we should be advising people to dial non-emergency number at dispatch, that 911 is there for a very specific reason, which is for instantaneous emergency access. And one of the things we do by moving to WCC, which I am in favor of, is the interoperability, the ability to have police and fire all dispatched together is critical for public safety, for the people. And look, I live in this city. My kids could call 911. And it's important for us to be able to look at this objectively and to make those decisions. We are in these seats to make these decisions, that's what we're elected for. I don't need political cover for my decision. I don't need folks to, you know, a million people to support me or not support me, I'm here to make that decision, that's what we're, we're here to do. And my decision rests on a few points. The transfer delay, we have, we institutionalized, and I argued this three years ago, a transfer delay. It's logical, it's common sense, it does not disappear until we go to one consolidated dispatch service. Is WCC 100% perfect? No. Are we 100% perfect? No. Do we have two good dispatch services? I think we do. I sat with both of them for hours on end listening to calls and I'll tell you, I think they do both a great job. But what we can't get with the, the split dispatch is one unified consolidated dispatch dispatching everyone and then that interoperability. Look, there's delays both ways. I don't want that delay to happen if my kid calls. I don't want that delay to happen when my kid's choking or when I'm in a car accident. I don't want there to be 20 seconds or 30 seconds. The chief would not tell me how long of a delay he's comfortable with. I'm comfortable with no delay and I don't care who gets to the scene first. It makes sense for the police to get there first because they typically are patrolling in the streets, Western Lakes has to load up. I don't care who gets there first, I just want there to be as little delay as possible. I, I think the other, cost has not been our primary focus, but I think it is important. There is a cost saving that over many years leads to millions of dollars of savings. And we are different than Waukesha and Elm Grove. We are truly a local now standalone by itself island dispatch, only dispatching for police. And we only dispatch nine 911 calls a day. We need to move that service over, create that consolidation and work with the 24/7 clerical, whatever we need to do. I think we start out with what the, the study recommended and continue to improve and evolve that as needed. And this debate's not unique, so I, I had to do, I did a lot of digging on this. I, I don't want to read them all because I don't want to bore everyone, but I've got a, a study from the state of Missouri, 2017, doing all the same things that we talked about. They've addressed all the same issues. They address the, the difficulty of the political challenges of moving from small local dispatch to larger consolidated dispatch. They talk about the transfer delays between the dispatches and the complexity of those services and how you can lose calls and you can lose that care. Utah dealt with this, Washington, Minnesota, our neighbor, the same exact issues. They're addressing how they address transfers, how they address consolidated services and creating those efficiencies. There's no question in my mind that we'll create efficiencies. The Matrix study was very clear and actually Alderman Ellis pointed this out, officer safety is not going to be affected either way we go. But what will be affected is the calls and the delays to our folks. Those are our citizens that we represent and those, that's me too. And I live here and I'm part of that service umbrella and I think the move is the right decision at this time.
So what, Alderman Shellpepper?
Thank you, Mayor. It's a night for prepared remarks, it's an important topic, so, yeah.
And we can still ask questions, folks, so if you have questions.
Well, we've had a lot of time, I think, to ask questions and to dig and, and do the discussion, so. So to all those who called or emailed me or participated in tonight's public comment, I hear you, I see you, I appreciate you for engaging on this important topic. To our first responders, thank you for keeping us safe and choosing to be public servants in the city of Oconomock. For those who don't know me, my name is Chaz Shellpepper. I served as a combat medic in an Army Infantry Battalion for six years, including a tour in Iraq. While I've never been a police officer or a firefighter, I do have a significant experience in providing emergency medical care and working in a high-stress, dangerous occupation. I had the honor of being elected to this position in April of 2020, so I did not take part in the previous dispatch votes. While I have great esteem for and respect for my colleagues on this council who previously voted on the topic, Alderman Rozek, Ellis Spiegelberg and Kavieski, and I also have great esteem for my predecessor who sat in this seat for many years, they failed to make sure proper due diligence was done prior to their November 2019 vote. There is no way this council should have even considered voting until an unbiased, impartial and comprehensive third-party study was conducted on the merits of maintaining a divided or unified dispatch system. So what has the result of their decision been? An ongoing debate that has not ceased since the 2019 vote, the purchasing of expensive dispatch equipment and service contracts, job insecurity and anxiety for the OPD dispatchers and an overall lack of resolution to the entire matter. I voted in favor of having the study done because I was not willing to double down on past council's mistakes. I voted in favor of the study because I wanted a professional public safety consulting group with absolutely no skin in the game to provide me with a fair, thorough and honest assessment of Oconomock's dispatch services. Now I understand there are some parties who question the thoroughness or the impartiality of the study. Let me assure all of you that this study was candid, fair, thorough and impartial. The truth is that as long as a recommendation was made in favor of unified dispatch under WCC, those parties would have challenged the integrity of any study or any consulting group because the outcome ran contrary to their own personal agendas. To those who claim the study should have interviewed individual police officers or citizens, let me, let me remind you, this was not a public opinion survey. It was a study conducted to ascertain facts, data and objective information. It's the job of this council to solicit feedback from officers and citizens, not the consulting group. There are two questions that I have heard repeatedly over the course of the past few months when I've spoken with constituents about the potential for unified dispatch under WCC. How quick will help arrive when I call 911 and how much is it going to cost me? That's the crux of this entire issue. While our police officers are also stakeholders in whatever decision this council makes, the ultimate stakeholder in this entire equation is the actual consumer of the public safety services, the residents of Oconomock. Therefore, any action this council takes should ensure such public safety services are the most effective and affordable that they can be. By switching to unified dispatch under WCC, both will be true. Our citizens will be receiving more effective and efficient emergency services at a better price. Let me be clear, WCC is already dispatching for any 911 call made in the city of Oconomock in which fire or EMS services are required. However, if you call for fire EMS from a landline, OPD dispatch has to transfer you to call, your call to WCC. This transfer would be eliminated with unified dispatch under WCC. WCC is also already the initial call taker on any 911 call that you make from a cell phone in the city of Oconomock that necessitates a police response. However, under our current divided dispatch system, WCC then must transfer your call to the OPD's dispatch center for police to be dispatched to your location. This transfer not only takes 30 to 60 seconds to complete, but also requires you to repeat everything you told the dispatcher at WCC then to the OPD dispatcher. In a field where every second and minute is precious to preserving life limit property, I refuse to accept the fallacy that transfers and delays are irrelevant and not detrimental to the overall quality of emergency service that we receive as consumers. These delays and transfers are not the fault of the OPD dispatchers. Instead, they are the inevitable result of the divided dispatch system Oconomock currently operates under. The only realistic way to address these shortcomings is through changing the system to one of unified dispatch under WCC. So let me circle back to my first question. How quick will help arrive when I call 911? Well, with a unified dispatch system under WCC, the answer is just as fast, if not faster, than help currently arrives. In regards to the second question, how much will it cost? With a unified dispatch system under WCC, the city will be saving annually $125,000, which means you will be saving about $17 each per year on your property taxes. Now to our Oconomock police officers who I see sitting in the office and in, in attendance, I appreciate you all being here, you've been here a long time, this has been a long meeting, who are also stakeholders in this debate over unified dispatch. You are going to experience a change in how you operate and interact with emergency dispatch services. I, I fully acknowledge that, I believe that is going to be true. You're going to have to adjust your tactics, techniques and procedures when it comes to radio discipline for, for communications. Now does that mean, no, that does not mean if, you know, if your safety has risk or if you're at a high-stress call that you won't be able to get on the air. You will, and I have been assured by officers who currently utilize Talk Three, Talk Group Three, that you will. But you will have to be more judicious in your use of the radio during communications. I understand this will be convenient and will force you to adjust how you conduct your operations. However, I can look you square in the eye and say that WCC's dispatchers are just as committed to your safety and the public safety as OPD dispatchers, that WCC's dispatchers are just as competent, well-trained and dedicated to supporting you as OPD dispatchers are, that your single lifeline in a high-stress domestic dispute or high-speed motor vehicle pursuit will be just as responsive and concerned for your welfare as OPD's dispatchers are. Moreover, I can look you in the eye and I can tell you that switching to a unified dispatch under WCC will support the integration of OPD into a Waukesha County public safety apparatus that is the most effective, cooperative and interoperable emergency response asset that can be delivered to the public. The net gain for you and the ultimate consumer of your emergency services is going to be a reduction in delays and call transfers, as well as increased cost efficiency and ultimately increased cooperation and interoperability among the public safety entities. increased cooperation and interoperability among the public safety entities servicing the city of Oconomawak and our surrounding areas. So with all this in mind, and based on the study's recommendation, as well as the dozens conversations I've had with police officers, firefighters, dispatchers, and constituents, I will be in voting in favor of acting on the results of the study and directing the Oconomawak Police Department to begin executing plans to unify their dispatch services with Waukesha County Communications. Thank you for all being here tonight, thank you, Mayor.
What I'd like to do to kind of conclude, Alderman, if you have any questions or further comments before the vote, we'll go around the horn like we've done in the past, we'll start with Alderman Kavieski here on the left, so give you a chance, Lou, to collect your thoughts, or if you have any further questions. If you don't, just say pass, there's no requirement to say anything. I want to make sure that every council member has a last shot of a question of any kind that you feel is valuable, and then we'll entertain a motion after that time. So we have our two professionals here, they're still here happy to answer your question, or you can continue with the statement. And to the audience, thank you for your patience and staying here through this whole process. It's very important, and we want to make sure we get it right. Alderman Kavieski, do you have any further comments or questions?
Appreciate the opportunity, I'm fine.
You're fine. Alderman Shellpepper.
No, thank you, Mayor.
Alderman Mulder. Alderman Spiegelberg.
Alderman Shellpepper said something to the effect of, those of us who weren't in agreement with the study have our own agenda, and that there's nothing further from the truth than that. I have no agenda. My agenda is for the people of Oconomawak, the safety of Oconomawak, and for our police force, who are sworn to keep our city safe. As far as the costs that we save, we virtually will save nothing, because if we have to hire a full-time IT person, that's going to suck up any extra savings that we have. Last but not least, I'd really like to hear from Chief Fister again.
And we can come up with closing comments from WCC and OPD if they would like to, that'll be their choice. Alderman Ellis.
As I stated, I said what I was going to say, let it pass.
Alderman Zappel.
Pass.
Alderman Rozek.
Nothing further.
Alderman Douglas.
Well, being new to council, I didn't come prepared with a big statement. I guess I had to learn with that.
You don't have to do statements.
I mean, it's definitely a hard position to be in. I mean, WCC has issues that they need to address. It would make it so much easier if WCC used ProPhoenix, it's a great system. You know, using the RMS side that I currently use, honestly, probably the best system out there that I've worked with, going hand-in-hand with us on the road and, you know, and the records management side. I have that side of my brain that's saying, less radio traffic is great, you know, I can talk on the radio and I can do whatever I want. And I have the other side of me that's sitting here as an Alderman, what's best for the community, it's a conflict inside. The biggest thing that, for me, that is hard, I mean, it really talks about, right in the beginning of the study, the issue of transfers is a serious one, and it's not going to change. It's, every transfer from every PS app to another PS app is going to be a delay in dispatch and response. The ability to pre-alert fire and EMS at the same time is huge. You know, as a first responder, you can hook up an AED and you can, you know, give CPR, you know, wrap up, you know, a cut, you know, but the paramedic service that's provided really goes above and beyond to save lives, you know, whether that's putting epi in, you know, doing a bone drill into someone's, in their leg. Like I said, it has nothing, my decision has nothing to do with thinking that Oconomawak PD or WCC is better than the other. There is flawed stuff in the study. I mean, it talks about 60% isn't dispatched within 60 seconds. He stood up here and said it's not a real number. Oconomawak PD pre-alerts calls, WCC pre-alerts calls. How do you take that into effect? When the data isn't there to show that it's been pushed out? It's not a real number in the study, and I don't know how you get that number. I mean, I had other questions, you know, for the two, I think we're kind of past that, you know, regarding the new ESI response, you know, how that functions to both WCC and Oconomawak, is there an upgrade for that? Or are both of them capable of handling that right now with their current computer systems? As we had them stand up here and ask questions, we immediately went into, you know, our thoughts. They said, it's a difficult question for me to answer, it's not a reflection on the PD or Oconomawak dispatch, but taking out that time delay is important, that's what I have to say.
Chief Fister, would you like to make any final comments? You can always say pass, too.
I'd love to. No, I just, I want to thank everybody. I really, I respect all the Aldermen up here, doing your due diligence and looking at it. Just because you have a different opinion than me, that doesn't matter. I understand where you're coming from, and I guarantee you, no matter which way we go, we'll still be the best police department in the area. We'll still provide the highest quality of public safety between police and fire. I understand that. And I understand that there's differences between our opinions on this, which is fine. Ultimately, it's your decision. All I can do is make a recommendation as chief, and we go from there on it. I'm not conceding this, I'm still going to pitch all of you right now, one last time, to save our local dispatch, but I appreciate your time tonight, so thank you.
Thank you. Chris.
I don't really have much further, I'll just echo the Chiefs. Thanks for taking the time to look at this and inviting us in here to make some comments on it. And just know that we at WCC are committed to providing the best possible service to you and your constituents, as well as to Oconomawak Police Department, police officers, and we're committed to their safety as well.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion.
I'd like to move to accept the recommendation of the Matrix study and complete the following items. Move our dispatch to WCC, hire four full-time, and the part-time clerks as outlined in the study, pay the one-time WCC fee out of the reserves, and with the transfer being completed in six months or less if possible.
Second.
Who, who's second? Alderman Zappel.
Okay.
Second?
All right.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Regarding that motion, rather than taking out our reserves, we've been talking about the unused levy reserve that's sitting out there.
That's what it would be.
That's what we're talking about?
Yep.
Okay.
The unassigned reserve.
Okay. I'll put that in there.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Six months or less. So we've got infrastructure over there, we've got equipment over there, we've got contracts over there that we're willing within six months to just say, poof, versus what the Matrix study said was that there was no urgency to this, that we should look to transfer at the end of all of those contracts, which would be 2024.
Yeah, that's my motion.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor. So, you know, and I appreciate the motion about where those funds should come from. I'd like the opportunity for our finance department to review, because you're talking about using the unused levy, that's one of the discussions that'll be coming back in the next couple of weeks as part of the budget.
Right, we have 3.2 million in unassigned levy. We have another 3 million.
And I apologize if I'm thinking about the wrong one, I was thinking about the unused levy that we were looking to carry forward. Okay, thank you, thank you.
Yeah.
That's what I was talking about.
Alderman Mulder.
Sorry, thank you. I'm not in favor of going to 2024, I think we only see a degradation of service over time because of the difficult position we've now put our dispatchers in, but I also, I don't know if six months is arbitrary, we do want, I believe we want to do it with haste. I don't know that in six months, I think they'll be on the cusp of closer to full-time, so I don't know how to nuance that though.
Yeah, that's why I said six months or less, if possible. And I think I gave that, you know, so if it's like, hey, it needs to be eight, or seven, or nine, or we have to go over next week, that they're capable of doing that. That's, I mean, that was, that's why I gave that wiggle room in there.
I don't have a better answer, but I do share the sentiment that that's arbitrary.
It could be.
Alderman Kavieski.
Anything that's arbitrary up here?
I believe at one point earlier in discussion, WCC mentioned that they would need about six months in order to transfer and prepare, so I'm comfortable with that six-month period of time, and I believe the ability, if need be, based on staffing and other issues, if it's earlier than that, then we've covered that in the motion. So I'm comfortable with the motion and the timeframe, I don't think it's necessarily arbitrary, I believe it's adequate and appropriate.
Just so you're aware, as Chris had mentioned, our staff did go there to talk with them about all of those, and over the last few months, they've done risk assessments with our HR director to look at what happens if one scenario happens or the other. And so we've tried to put all of the scenarios in play, so again, we keep the community safe. So I think that motion is fine with that as an expectation, but I would defer to our staff and our police chief to make that decision, not this governing body. So motion's been made, it has been second. Any last comments before we vote? Make sure everybody has a chance to talk. I didn't miss anyone. Call roll, please.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rozek.
Aye.
Alderman Zappel.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Nay.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Nay.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
And it passes. Thank you, everybody. Onto any staff reports. Matrix, thank you for coming, I meant Matrix, WCC, thank you for coming, all the folks from OPD, thank you so much for coming. Any staff reports?
Not that I'm aware of.
With no staff reports, do we have any reports or comments from Alderman? No comments from Alderman, I'm going to make one short comment. I think it's really important, it's been said multiple times, we have an incredibly safe community, and this council's investing heavily in our safety, and we do what's best and what we can afford. And so we are safe, and the community should never feel at any point in time that we're dropping the ball, because I'm confident that we're not. Thank you very much, call for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Can you tell me who made the motion to adjourn? Who? Okay, and who did the second?
I don't know.
Thank you.